All right, welcome everyone. Welcome to our regular city council meeting Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, located here at the Veterans Memorial Hall, and we're starting at 6:00 PM. For the record, all members of council are present. We do have a quorum, and we'll call the meeting into order. If we could please start out by taking a moment of silence, please. And Councilmember Davis, will you lead us in the pledge?
I've got a San Francisco Giants flag in my car.
That's close.
Begin.
Close session report, we have nothing to report out at this time. And Mayor, Councilmember reports and announcements, Red.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I want to recognize one of our special Morro Bay citizens, Elaine Stoick, for the special contributions that she makes to our community. Elaine joined the newcomers' club immediately when she came to Morro Bay, and she has never left the newcomers' club. She is continuing her mission to welcome new people to Morro Bay. And then, a few years ago, when Jerry Fuller retired as treasurer for the Morro Bay Friends of the Library, Elaine stepped up, and she took over that position, acting as treasurer for the Friends. Then shortly after that, she and her husband Rich bought a boat, and it's moored out in the harbor. They joined the yacht club, and now Elaine is secretary for the Morro Bay Yacht Club. So I want to thank Elaine for all of the ways that she supports some of our important organizations. And I need to ask a question. Gail and I saw a herd of goats yesterday in the Cloisters Park, and I wonder if Rob or Scott could tell us about the goats?
So, we've used goats periodically for invasive vegetation control. So, we plan it, we use them at the Cloisters Park. And then also, pending our permits with Fish and Wildlife down in the Lila Kaiser Park area, we'll be using them. And they're very efficient devours of leafy vegetation, so they do a good job at it. Just remind folks to stay back from the goats, they're not pets, they're working animals there. And we use a company out of San Luis Obispo called Goat Girls.
Okay. Yeah, they're a lot of fun to watch, and another reason to stay back is that they are surrounded by an electric fence.
Yeah, it's rather exciting if you touch that.
Yeah. And I noticed that not only do they devour the weeds, but they provide a good deal of soil enrichment as well.
That's true.
And last thing, I'm going to do office hours this coming Saturday at Sun 'n Buns from 9:00 until 10:00.
Thanks, Red. Matt? John?
Good evening. A couple of announcements for you. My heart goes out to the many people that have been affected by the wildfires here in California, especially with the loss of property and lives. And it's an opportunity for not only individuals, but communities to come together and help support organizations that can assist with those devastating kinds of incidents. The Community Foundation in San Luis Obispo County is a local organization with a high level of trust in San Luis Obispo County. If you're interested in donating, you can go to their website. It is the Community Foundation, San Luis Obispo County, if you just Google that, you'll get it. They are highly trusted, they designate the money to various different not-for-profits that support efforts to provide relief to those that have lost property again, and those that have lost loved ones, excuse me. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to come together as a community and support. So, if you're looking for that opportunity, the Community Foundation of San Luis Obispo County is something to think about in terms of donations and supporting what we can do to help in that situation. The second comment I'll make has to do with the election. When my opponent and I first decided to run for office, we came together and talked about how we would carry ourselves in the community, and how we would campaign. And we came to agreement on the fact that we would be dignified, we would not be disparaging to one another, there would be no finger pointing, and that one of the goals that we would try to establish would be the appearance in our, in the way that we carried ourselves, of how we should carry ourselves in the community when dealing with issues, whether we agree or disagree on those issues. And I'm very proud of Mr. Weiss, and I'm proud of myself for running a campaign that was very clean, never disparaging to each other. We have spoken since the election and agreed to work together in the future, even though we may have differences with regard to issues. And I appreciate that greatly about Mr. Weiss and our friendship and our commitment to this community. One of the things that we talked about had to do with something that I will bring up at the end of the meeting, it has to do with the actual non-counting of votes for our 218 process. And I have a prepared statement I do want to read, and again, it's not an action item right now, but it is an opening comment that I'd like to share with the community. "With the results of the election now fairly certain, it is now imperative, we as community leaders, do what we can to unite the community as we move forward on the important WRF project and all city matters for that fact. In that light, I ask my fellow council members to consider adding to an upcoming council agenda, an item to discuss whether to direct staff to formally verify and tabulate all of the ballots the city received prior to the end of the WRF public healing. My suggestion is not to reopen whether they were sufficient, valid, or invalid protests against the 218 surcharges. That determination has been made with certainty, and based on publicly available criteria provided in Resolution 44-18, which has concluded a sufficient number of valid ballots have not been returned. Even with that, it is my hope that actually verifying and tabulating the valid number of protests will lay to rest any community consternation over all of those who appropriately expressed an opinion about the WRF surcharges that have not been heard. During that verification and tabulation, staff would use all of the established criteria according to Resolution 44-18, except the need for a protest to include a date after July 13th, 2018, which is the date of the city's public notice commencing the WRF 218 protest period. As part of a discussion item for the next council meeting, I'm also seeking that this council decide whether the presently seated council, or the council to be seated in early December, would be the one to provide that direction. To provide the maximum latitude for the current council's discussion regarding this matter, this evening, I'm seeking a consensus from at least two other of my colleagues to add an agenda item to the next council meeting to discuss the above-mentioned item, and decide whether to direct staff to verify and tabulate all protest votes received by the city clerk by the end of September 11th, 2018, WRF 218 public hearing, and when that tabulated would be returned to council, or whether those directions should be left to a newly seated council to discuss and make that decision." I bring that forward to you tonight, I will bring it up at the appropriate time during council agenda items. It's an offering in discussing with my opponent, a way to begin working together as a community to move forward. For every issue that has surrounded this WRF project, there are 10 other issues that are extremely important to this community that we need to continue moving forward on. And so with that, I want to thank Mr. Weiss for his commitment and our commitment to working together in the future, but also the past, for the betterment of the community. And tonight, I will be bringing that up as a proposed agenda item for future consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Marlos?
Thank you, John. I don't have any announcements.
Okay, great. I have a couple announcements. is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California, declaring First off, I did want to thank all the candidates who stepped up to run a campaign and to put November 13th, 2018, Joe Penone Day. Whereas, Joe Penone, a graduate of Loyola Law School in 1980, and equity partner with themselves out there to run for office. I just want to say thanks. I know it's not, the councils aren't completed, but I just want to say thanks for all the candidates that stepped up, so for that. And then Veterans Day, I just wanted to thank all of our veterans within the community, Alashire Winder LLP, has practiced municipal law for over 30 years, serving as a city attorney and particularly, it was Scott and staff that put together an employee Veterans Day for multiple cities, including the City of Morro Bay. And whereas, he has consistently acted with integrity and demonstrated a commitment to looking out for the best interests of the cities and communities he has worked for throughout ceremony down at the Centennial Stairway. I just want to say thanks for doing that, and Councilmember Davis was there as a veteran, his career. And whereas, Joe is recognized as a leader and authority in the field of municipal law, and many of our employees, and it was just awesome to do. as evidenced by his participation in League of California Cities City Attorney Department, I hope that's something that we can continue to do during Veterans Day, but just wanted for which he was a charter member of that department's Municipal Law Handbook Editorial to give a shout out to staff for coordinating that, Red, as a veteran, and participating Board, the numerous speeches he has delivered at professional conferences, and his work in that coordination and everything else, so thanks for that. And then, we wanted to also, we have a proclamation tonight, and I think we want to go down to on several important California Supreme Court cases. And whereas, Joe joined the City of Morro Bay team in March of 2014, quickly establishing the podium, and we have a proclamation. himself as a stabilizing force for the city, where Joe's sound and thoughtful advice has enabled the city to achieve success in numerous legal complex and challenging situations, contributing to the city's overall vitality. And whereas, Joe's leadership and legal guidance has left a lasting legacy for the City of Morro Bay by reforming the city's contracting process, helping to revise policies and procedures, assisting in important harbor lease negotiations, and other important projects and programs, minimizing the city's liabilities, and setting our city on a better footing as he begins a new phase in life. And whereas, the entire City of Morro Bay team will greatly miss Joe's leadership, tireless work ethic, humor, and steady hand. And whereas, we wish Joe a wonderful retirement, one full of travel to exotic places near and far with his wife Lori. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Morro Bay do hereby proclaim November 13th, 2018, as Joe Penone Day, and encourage city employees and citizens to take this opportunity to applaud Joe for his tremendous career and excellent service he has provided our community. Joe? Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. If you'd like to say some things.
I think I'll do it there. Wow. Thank you very much. I really am touched, and I have really enjoyed the time I've spent with Morro Bay. The staff is wonderful, the council has been great, the community is wonderful, and I'm not completely going away. I'm going to still be involved with the Harbor Department, helping with leases and that kind of thing, with the water reclamation facility process, and whatever else may need assistance to help the transition of the new person that's coming in, Chris Newmeyer, who's been the assistant for quite a while. In my, it's actually been 38 years I've been practicing this area of law, and I feel very fortunate to have found it, and very fortunate to have been able to participate with Morro Bay, and so I thank you for the opportunity your predecessor gave me, and you continue to give me. I'm not sure how I'll ever cause myself to be okay about this recognition, but thank you very much, and for those of you who kept it a secret, darn you! But thank you very much.
All right, Joe, thank you. Red? Do you have any, is anybody, any comments from, do you want to just, go ahead?
I have greatly appreciated Joe's good nature and his forbearance, as I have learned the ins and outs of what I can and cannot do or say. So, thanks, Joe, appreciate you.
And likewise, Joe, thank you, and a number of fronts, some, from the legal aspect, thank you for, you know, walking me through so many issues that I really had to learn about. It's very key to the city, and just the service you've given to the city. And also, the one thing that I don't know if anybody knows about, but a number of times, Joe's worked with my students at my school, and he's come to my classroom.
In Lampoke.
In Lampoke. And so, that work that you do, not just with the city, but coming to work with young people as a teacher, I really appreciate it, and then for our community, I think what you've given us, so thank you.
Thanks, Matt. John?
Joe Prego, as you would say. Now, I want to add my thanks as well. By the way, Joe Penone Day will not be a national holiday, it will be a local holiday, and according to Scott, all staff members will have the day off with pay, which is a great thing, so we can thank you for that. It's on tape? No, I'm kidding. Joe, you are a consummate professional, although you're still practicing, you'll get it perfect soon, I'm sure. I've worked with many lawyers in the past, not personally, folks, in my career, in the hospital industry, and you are bar none, no pun intended, one of the best individuals that I've ever worked with. Your quick response, your knowledge base, your depth of understanding, and also your strategic thinking ability that you've often added, in addition to your legal commentary, has been extremely grateful to not only myself, but I think the city as well. I'm glad you're not going away completely, that we still have you to depend on for a couple of important issues, and certainly wish you the best in your future travels and time with your sweetheart. Thanks for your service.
Yeah, well, let me add my two cents of thanks for Joe. I have really truly appreciated his service to Morro Bay. I mean, he, you can go to Joe with any legal issue or question, and you can trust his judgment, because you know he's experienced, you know he's right, and he's been so helpful in so many situations, especially over this last difficult period with the WRF. I just can't express my appreciation enough, and of course, we wish you well, and I am also glad that we'll see you occasionally, and he's also a super nice guy, so thank you.
Thanks. Many people may not know, but as soon as Joe got here, he jumped right into Morro Bay. He's donated to many fundraisers and charities within the city, that it's just the type of person he is. I can only say thanks, but I think what's more important, it's not the legal advice in which you are tasked to do for our city, but it's your thoughtfulness, and your kindness, and compassion for humanity, so I just want to say thanks, Joe, for everything. And with that...
Can I leave now?
We should move on to our next part of it, and we're going to turn it over to Scott. You've got some other wonderful things to celebrate tonight, and you can help us with that.
Sure. Just one thing I wanted to mention before turning it over to our fire chief. I am very happy to announce, and I know it's been out in the public, that we have a new police chief, Jody Cox, so this is his first meeting here at City Council. Now, I was a little worried he wouldn't take the job, but he did, and he's already hitting the streets hard, and he has a great team, he knows them well, he's been inside the organization for over five years, and he knows the community well, and he's going to do a fantastic job, I know that. We will do the official swearing-in next Monday, 9:00 AM, at the community center, and the public is invited to attend. So that's all I had to say, I wanted to turn it over to the fire chief to talk a little bit about the fires that are going on, and kind of how Morro Bay is participating in the response.
Thank you, Scott, and Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you so much. You know, so far in California, 229,000 acres have burned, it's just the last four or five days, and close to 350,000 people have been evacuated. And close to over 11,000 firefighters are working the lines right now, from California, from other states, and also in the federal agencies. The three major fires, one is the campfire up in Butte County, it's 125,000 acres, 30% contained at this time, it still has some active fire going on. What's sad is 6,500 homes have been destroyed, and if you really think about it, that's the amount of homes we have here in Morro Bay. We have also 16,000 are threatened right now, and what's really sad is the 42 fatalities have already been found, and they're expecting to find more as they get back into the burned areas, but there's definitely a sad fire. Three firefighters were injured. Another fire is in Ventura County, was Hill Fire, it's 90% contained right now, 4,500 acres, all evacuation's been lifted. And then the Woolsey Fire in LA and Ventura County, it's over 100,000 acres, about 35% contained, and it's still active, burning around Thousand Oaks. We had two civilian fatalities down there, and three firefighters injured, and 435 structures have been lost so far, and 57,000 are threatened. If you look at the fire map, it's right on the edge of San Fernando Valley, Canoga Park, Chatsworth area, but they are having some repopulation, especially on the coast side. Our firefighters are down there at this time, I have an engine company down there. Today, they were working in the Thousand Oaks area, were flared up, and they just see some action there. And a couple days ago, they were the first strike team on scene for initial attack of a 200 condo complex on Pacific Coast Highway. It's amazing, on Pacific Coast Highway, they're doing structured defense. They did lose five condos, but they saved about 190, 95 condos in that complex. We'll still continue to have smoke in the area, it will increase, we'll keep a close eye on any health advisory, they may come from public health. We're still getting requests for our firefighters, and as scheduling permits, we'll continue to send our firefighters out. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. And next up, we can start with presentations, and would you like us to come down? Okay, we can join Scott in the pen presentation.
Yeah, I'm not sure who to present to right now, with council coming down here. So, being the city manager, I get to work with some amazing people in the workforce on behalf of the community. We have over 100 full-time employees and a lot of part-time employees and instructors for the Recreation Department, and they're all really committed to the betterment of our community. And I get to see that, and none of them are secret recognition, that's not why they take these jobs. But I get the opportunity, when they hit certain marks in their career, to recognize some of our special employees. And this year, we have seven employees that have hit special anniversary dates, we usually go five and 10-year increments, and I have three of them who are here tonight that I'd like to bring up one by one to kind of recognize and honor their service to the community. So first up, I have Lori Stilts with the Harbor Department, if she could come on up. So Lori's been with the city overall for 10 years, so you get a 10-year pin.
Thank you.
And Lori, who's our Harbor Business Coordinator, joined the city in 2007. Fortunately, we missed you last year, so you're actually 11 years, but we're glad she's able to attend. So she started out in the Police Department as a part-time property technician, and then transferred over to the Finance Department to work in water, and she combined her water and public safety brilliance to join the Harbor Department, since they do both. Lori was promoted, that was in 2010, she was promoted to her current position of Business Coordinator in 2012, where she coordinates the business of the department, which includes lease site management, accounts receivable, overseeing patrol, and all these other things, and she does it efficiently and effectively, and always with her trademark smile, so we're so thankful for her service to the community. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Karen Sweeney with the Recreation Department. So Karen, Karen has been with us for 15 years in the Recreation Department, here is your lovely 15-year pin. And in fact, though, I think there are more years here that we are including, she was a lifeguard in the 80s.
Yes.
You know, was trying out for Baywatch, but then moved on.
Yes, moved on.
Went to college, got married, had kids, did that thing, and then came back, luckily rejoined the city in 2003, which she's been a part of, and really the heart of the Recreation Division. She is our queen of recreation, she's touched the lives of hundreds or thousands of youth in our community and others, encouraging their development and their participation in activities that are rich their lives, so just wanted to say thank you so much. And last but not least, we have Eric Endersby, our Harbor Director. It's a same-sized pin, don't get too excited. Okay, so I could go on about Eric, but I'll try to keep it brief. So he was hired by the City of Morro Bay in 1993 as a part-time Reserve Harbor Patrol Officer, and he hung in there for four years before becoming a full-time Harbor Patrol Officer, and wound up leading that up, and he was exceptional at that, so they promoted him all the way up the chain to Harbor Director in 2012, basically knows everything about the harbor. He is a top-notch public servant, one of the best I've ever worked for, or worked with. I feel...
Coordinator in 2012, where she coordinates the business of the department, which includes lease site management, accounts receivable, overseeing patrol, and all these other things. And she does it efficiently and effectively, and always with her trademark smile. So, we're so thankful for her service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Karen Sweeney with the Recreation Department. So, Karen, Karen has been with us for 15 years in the Recreation Department. Here is your lovely 15-year pin. And in fact, though, I think there are more years here that we aren't including. She was a lifeguard in the 80s.
Yes.
You know, was trying out for Baywatch, but then moved on.
Yes, moved on.
Went to college, got married, had kids, did that thing, and then came back. Luckily, rejoined the city in 2003, which she's been a part of, and really the heart of the Recreation Division. She is our queen of recreation. She's touched the lives of hundreds or thousands of youth in our community and others, encouraging their development and their participation in activities that are rich their lives. So, just wanted to say thank you so much. And last but not least, we have Eric Endersby, our Harbor Director.
Ooh.
Yeah. 25 years.
Wow.
It's a same-sized pin. Don't get too excited.
[laughter]
Okay, so, I could go on and on about Eric, but I'll try to keep it brief. So, he was hired by the City of Morro Bay in 1993 as a part-time Reserve Harbor Patrol Officer. And he hung in there for four years before becoming a full-time Harbor Patrol Officer and wound up leading that up. And he was exceptional at that, so they promoted him all the way up the chain to Harbor Director in 2012. Basically knows everything about the harbor. He is a top-notch public servant, one of the best I've ever worked for, or worked with.
[laughter]
I feel like, yeah, that's right. That was not a slip.
[laughter]
It's not a slip. Somehow, he manages to wear multiple hats at once. He's a negotiator, diplomat, Army Corps Whisperer, top water cop, and a city historian all at the same time. You're a great pleasure to work with. You make everybody smile, you make everybody happy, do such an amazing job for our community. We're so lucky to have you here. So, thank you, Eric. And I'll just read off the names of the other four who weren't able to attend. We have Robert Victor, 10 years, utility operator with Public Works. Patrick Bernard, 15 years mechanic with Public Works. Michael Talmage, 15 years with the Fire Department as a captain. And last but not least, Robert Huesteller, 20 years with the Morro Bay Police Department. Great employees.
Thanks for taking the time to come out tonight as well, Lori and Karen. Eric, you had to be here.
[laughter]
All right. Thanks, everybody. Okay, moving on. Next up on the agenda, so we've got public comment, we've got consent, we've got a public hearing item, and we have several business items. Before we get on to public comment, I just want to ask council if they would consider or approving, moving Item C1 to our, ahead of the public hearing item. This would allow Chris Reed, who's here representing this and discussing this item, he's going to be double duty here tonight with the City of Morro Bay, and then going back to the City of San Luis Obispo. They're hearing the same item, so out of respect for that time, and then just try to coordinate there, just getting, looking for consensus for council. All right, thank you. And Dawn, thanks. I talked with Dawn earlier. I didn't get to talk with the applicant, but I did get a chance to talk with Dawn in preparation that this might happen, so it should go pretty quick, and we're just going to make some minor adjustments there. Thank you. So, with that, moving on to public comment, we don't have any business spots this week, so we're going to go right into public comment. First up, Walter Heath. Come on up. And then Aaron Oaks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Walter Heath, Morro Bay resident. I just wanted to provide a kind of a brief update of some of the projects that Morro Bay and Bloom has been doing. And one in particular, the downtown planter boxes. I think, you know, people probably have noticed a little bit of a change there. And I just wanted to provide a little bit of background on that. City Council earlier this year passed a program called Adopt Morro Bay. And it's an exciting program for all residents, and I really want to make a mention of it because people can basically adopt their street and agree to pick litter up and make a project proposal that would include some civic beautification types of materials, plants and what have you. Make that proposal. The proposals are entertained in, received and evaluated in July and January of each year. And if the proposal is approved, then the residents of that street could get the materials paid for, reimbursed, you know, with a valid receipt and all that sort of thing. So, with that in mind, Morro Bay and Bloom applied for, to take care of the planter boxes in downtown. There are 19 planter boxes, and we were selected to do that. And so, we prepared the boxes last Thursday, and then planted the boxes last Saturday. And so, you'll see a winter mix of plants with kind of a red, silver, and white color scheme going on downtown. And it was a lot of fun. It was greater than 900 plants were installed in less than two hours. It's roughly 50 plants per box. You can literally count them. And then what we're trying to achieve there is we're trying to achieve kind of a full-grown, mature look from day one. But as the plants themselves get larger and mature, we'll be able to take them out of the boxes and plant them elsewhere in the public landscape. So, there's a double benefit in doing this. And then the plan is to change the boxes out in March, that these boxes will get us through Valentine's Day, and then we'll plant a spring mix in anticipation of the Amgen Tour and so forth in March, and then hopefully a fall mix. Some folks may have noticed that we also have a couple of tableaus, fall tableaus, at the Roundabout with mums and pumpkins and the fall decoration. That'll be disassembled on Monday and moved to the community center following the swearing-in, and we'll be there for the community Thanksgiving. One inside, one outside, so get a little bit of mileage out of that. Our other, our other seven sites that we're currently managing or filling in gaps, basically, I mean, for Public Works and doing what we can to be additive, include Centennial Parkway and the Visitor Center, the Morro Bay Visitor Center, the Bike Park, where we're just kind of adding some curb appeal, and the heavy lifting is being coordinated by Bonnie Johnson with several groups, including Rock Harbor Fellowship. I see I'm out of time, but I'll be back to let you know what we're doing from time to time. Thank you.
Thanks, Walter. Thank you. Aaron Oaks. And then Helio Dayspring. I hope I got that right.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Aaron Oaks of Save Morro Bay. And before I begin my remarks, I want to personally thank Councilman Heading for taking the initiative in reigniting the discussion on counting and validating the votes. I greatly appreciate Mr. Heading's comments. I was pleasantly surprised, but we need to advance the conversation further. Save Morro Bay is counting and validating all the protest letters submitted to the city. We hired an attorney to conduct the process the city has previously refused to do, a similar process the county's doing right now with their elections, and a similar process that is happening right now in places like Arizona, Florida, and Georgia. To ensure fairness and transparency, we believe all votes should be counted. The city claims they're on solid legal ground to disenfranchise approximately 1,000 protests. Yet, they've provided no legal foundation or case law. All they've provided is an unconstitutional resolution that discriminates against the ratepayers' intent to protest rate increases for any reason. Legally, it doesn't matter if the rate increase is for $41 or more or less. Ratepayers have the right to protest for any reason they so choose. When all the protests are validated, then and only then will the community know the true outcome of their vote. After this election, we should be mending fences. We should be united. But by not counting all the protests, the community won't be able to heal properly. Save Morro Bay will continue to count and validate the protest. When we have tallied the honest and true results of the Prop 218, you, the community, will be the first to know because we deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. Helio Dayspring? I'm sorry, I hope I didn't butcher your name.
Oh, it's all right. It's Helios.
Helio, okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Helios Dayspring, owner of Natural Healing Center, the county's largest cannabis retailer. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My business is in Grover Beach, but I grew up in Morro Bay, attended Delmar Elementary, and still have family here. Growing up here, I fished under every restaurant on the waterfront, learned to surf on Morro Strand, and have a deep connection to this community. Today, I am speaking to invite this community to join us for our third annual turkey giveaway for needy families to be held this Sunday at the Madonna Inn Round Room from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. We will be giving away over 400 frozen turkeys and all the fixings that provide families with everything they will need to provide their Thanksgiving meal at home. This annual tradition is one way we give back to our community. There are so many hard-working people struggling to support their families, so we throw this event to alleviate some of that holiday stress. If someone you know is having trouble this season and would benefit from this event, please invite them to join us. Also, we have a dispensary application pending here in Morro Bay at an amazing location. We welcome everyone to come to Grover Beach and tour our current facility at any time. A member of our team will reach out to you guys with contact information. I also have some members of my team here, including my architect, Craig Smith, marketing consultant, Travis Ford, and community liaison, Aaron Young. If you have any questions, please reach out to any of my team members. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith Bates?
Meredith Bates, Morro Bay resident. I did really appreciate what you were saying, John, about uniting the community. I'm glad you spoke with the other candidate. I hope we can go forward and retain our unique, beautiful community in Morro Bay, working together. Thank you. I wanted to talk about Item C2. I can't stay for whenever it's going to be spoken about, but I had some questions and some concerns. One of the things that I have been very interested in is the Ocean D-Cell Plant. So, I wanted to really look at what that report, the One Water Plan, Morro Bay, had to say about that. And I thought, I found some what I consider inconsistencies. They talk about the Ocean D-Cell Plant needing to be reskinned, and they also talk about the fact that it may need to be relocated. So, I understand that in the same building is the Ocean D-Cell Plant and the brackish water skids, but when the report referred to the Ocean D-Cell Plant, I had no way of knowing that these were two separate items, and they weren't talking about the same thing. So, I really want to have more clarity, so I can really understand what's happening with the Ocean D-Cell Plant. If it's outlived its useful life, why are we talking about reskinning it or relocating it? And I had the opportunity to talk to Joe Mueller today, and he helped me understand some of the terminology, which helped. But I still would like to have things more available to the public to understand. And I know that report is like 1,000 pages long, and so I may have missed certain parts of it because I couldn't possibly read every single page. However, when I was looking for something specific, like the Ocean D-Cell Plant, I really would like to have more clarity on what is being talked about and how the brackish water skids are different from the D-Cell Plant. Thank you.
Thanks, Meredith. Teddy?
Good evening, mayor, council, staff. I'm Teddy Levatt, Morro Bay resident, and I'm just here to say thank you. I can't tell you how much I've learned in the few meetings I've gone to here, come to. I'm not a very political person, I think I've said that before. But I'm so aware of the steep learning curve that you have undertaken, especially with the sewer situation. I hear people say, well, they said three years ago, or they said six months ago. What happens when you get new information? You get a change of mind, you get a change of voice, and it's just all part of the learning curve. I respect that. I know what happens for all of us. I thank you for your service. I thank you for the time you put in, your consideration, your patience, your willingness to listen. I wish I could be here and be more supportive. I don't like to drive at night, but maybe Dawn will give me a ride, and I'll be coming here more often. Thank you so much for your healing remarks, John, about moving forward to consider those ballots. I think that's very positive. I think that shows tremendous goodwill. And when you acknowledge Joe, I don't know you, Joe, but you must be very special. [laughter] The remarks that each one of you made were so genuinely kind and sincere. You're just good people. People come on council to do the best they can for their community. That's my belief. They make mistakes every once in a while. Maybe they misspeak once in a while. What a horrible position to be in. I'm glad that people don't come to me and remind me of things I said and changed my mind about. Anyway, I'm just blabbering. I just want to thank you all for your service, and I look forward to the healing that we're going to have in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Teddy. Erica Crawford?
That was really sweet. My name is Erica Crawford from the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. Just for a couple of quick announcements, this weekend, we run our Main Street Market downtown Morro Bay, and we're doing a Cornucopia Community Fair. I think I've talked to you guys about it before. We just wanted to be here and invite the entire community down, kind of a community mixer. Our farmers will have fall produce. You can get your groceries for the Thanksgiving holiday next Thursday at the market. There will be a raffle. We wanted to thank Morro Bay Recreation. They'll be providing some of the face painting and kids' activity. We also will be doing a Thankful Tree, and we'll bring that to the community dinner at the community center on Thanksgiving. So, it'll be a community-created, just a chance for all of us to take a deep breath and appreciate where we live and the community that we're lucky enough to live in. And then I have one other quick thing. More on the business side of things from the chamber. We are doing the 4MB outreach again, starting our second cycle of outreach, starting in the North Morro Bay Business District tomorrow, to discuss signed content placement for the Wayfinding project that we're doing. But we are also really happy to have Morro Bay Police Department supporting us in this next cycle, so we can discuss public safety issues in each of the districts as well. So, we encourage everybody from each of your economic center to please come and talk with us and share with us. And we do have a survey out, with my terrible writing, survelegend.com/s/11ne, and that is for the public, public input on the Wayfindings signage types that Cal Poly students have put together. So, that'll be open end of December, Scott? Yep. So, as you're out hanging out with your families over the Thanksgiving holidays, show some signs, maybe take a vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. Bill Martoni?
Good evening, Bill Martoni, Morro Bay. It's only about 15 minutes back to the wine tasting, Joe. Congratulations to the police chief. Couple of items I wanted to speak about tonight, and that was, number one, the pipeline easement to the proposed wastewater treatment plant. Originally, I had mentioned there may be an alternate route that I feel might be better, and that was rather than tearing up Quintana Road and shutting down the businesses, had talked about going up the top of Rag Cliff. It's only about a mile of force main, and then gravity feeding the next two miles down to where your wastewater treatment plant is. And it's something that I think you should look into. It would be much cheaper going across farm ground than tearing up the town, and if there was ever any issues, you know, with spills or that, which there shouldn't be. It's a better location all around. And the reason I'm bringing this up is, in your, I don't know if you're there yet or not, with the landowner as far as the purchase, but you want to consider reserving an easement across Tri-W for this, should you look at this alternative. If you don't have that easement, then that option is gone. So, in the process, if it's not too late to actually, whether you use it or not, reserve either a blanket easement or an easement that is described for, from Rag Cliff to the wastewater treatment plant, so you don't lose that option. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the aquarium. I know you're talking about building an aquarium. It's approximately a 50-foot-wide lot on the Embarcadero. I've heard projections up to a loan that's available for approximately $20 million. I don't know that that's the right location for the aquarium. Way back when you acquired Distacchio's or the Eel Breakers property, I thought that building might be a more perfect location for an aquarium. It would tie the upper part of Morro Bay to the Embarcadero. Plenty of parking. You wouldn't have to doze out building for a convention center and that. Pumping saltwater is not that big of a deal, and it might just tie the whole community together and be a much better use for that location. I know there's other motel rooms coming online. I know Smith-Held has a 30-unit right next to... I know Smith-Held has a 30-unit right next to Blue Sale, a few more being proposed on the waterfront. And then also, the, the Morro Bay has a conference center that's probably underutilized. And the reason I'm bringing this up is I think maybe that location to really put Morro Bay into more balance, it might rethink that location for an aquarium. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Next up is Bob Keller. That's all the speaker slips I have for public comment.
For general public comment, I have public comment speaker slips for item C1 and B1 for later. Thanks, Bob.
Mayor, councilman, staff, Morro Bay citizens. My name is Bob Keller. I'm a resident of Morro Bay. First of all, I'm glad we got Chief Jody Cox here and we hired in staff, you know, in town, a local. Anyway, my thing is still to move forward with the WRF, and we have to move as fast as we can because we still have to worry about costs. Any delays, including any kind of court actions or problems that could stop this thing with the 218, would only be more costly to the city of Morro Bay. We have to look at this issue because we don't want a bigger liability if this 218 doesn't go. With the proper funding and grants and moving on with the WRF, our rates could be even lower, because I know everybody's working on this to bring this cost down as much as possible. The council is doing their due dealings to keep the costs in order, working with them in a positive way and input, and they could bring this cost down, and we should help work with them. Looking in the rearview mirror doesn't accomplish much, but looking forward could accomplish a lot. So let's, all the citizens of Morro Bay, work with our council positively. And anyway, to conclude, I'd like to personally thank Mayor Irons for his service, and Matt Kowitski, Matt McCow, who is councilman McCowitsky, for his service, in case I don't come to another meeting. And anyway, they put in long hours, the council put in long hours, so we should really appreciate what they do for our city. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. That's all the speaker slips I have for general public comment. With that, I'll conclude public comment, bring it back to council, and move on to the next item. I just want to get clarification. So we have a couple items regarding to the One Water Plan, so I just want to make sure we're capturing that, and we can have that discussion when that's agendized. Pipeline alternative by Mr. Martoni, and then Ms. Bates was making some comments about the D cell that we can discuss during the One Water discussion. And then I just want to get some legal clarification. There are some comments about counting the ballots, counting and validating, and, Joe, I just want to make sure that we understand the legalities of validating ballots. I think it's important to understand how that's done and who's responsible for doing that.
I think first, it may be helpful to first discuss what we mean by ballots. There's ballots that we just did a week or so ago for an election. That ballot is totally different than the ballots we're talking about for the Prop 218. That ballot has a whole different structure, a whole different purpose, significantly important purpose, that we all know and want to always ensure. And so that process is significantly different than the process we're talking about. And what we're talking about is a protest process. It's not, it's not a vote on the 218 process, it's not a vote of, yes, we're approving the surcharges. What it is, is giving the public an opportunity to protest the surcharges. And if there are insufficient validated protests that come in, then it doesn't matter how many there are, if there aren't enough. And the enough is based on the number of parcels that are subject to the surcharge. It's not based on the individuals, it's based on the parcels. So when we talk about validating ballots, there are several things that need to be, need to occur on the protest ballot. One is the name of the person, one is the parcel that they're involved with, either it has to have an address so we can find out if it's a legal parcel or a parcel number. And no matter how many people own that parcel or live on that parcel, and no matter how many protests are submitted for that parcel, it only counts, only one of them counts. So verifying the ballots are to make sure there's no duplicates, to make sure that the information that we just described is on the protest. And if any of that is not on there, or if there's more than one protest submitted for the same parcel, it doesn't count. And the process that would be followed, if the council directs, eventually directs staff to do that, all the ballots that were submitted will be looked at to determine whether or not they meet all that criteria. And if there are sufficient ballots that aren't duplicates and that contain all the information they have to contain, then those ballots will be counted, and if they don't, the ballots won't be counted.
Okay. And I guess I just wanted to thank you for that, Joe. I guess it was important to understand that ballots were being counted and validated, was the statement, and I just wanted to be, to ensure that the validation process, the legalities of anybody validating those ballots, I mean, that is, that is the responsibility of the city clerk by law, is it?
Correct. It's established by Prop 218 that the city is responsible for verifying that the protests are submitted are valid protests.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on, unless there's any other things from council that followed, that has to do with the public comment that I missed. I was just going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is consent. And with that, we'll move on to consent. So we have seven items for consent, and are there any items on consent that council would like to pull for discussion? If not, I would take a motion to approve all items on consent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCowitski, second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. So that's approval of consent by Councilmember McCowitski, second by Councilmember Davis. Approval 5-0. Okay, just, all right, good. And then next up, with council agreement on, we're going to go ahead and jump right into item C1. Item C1 is the approval of joining Monterey Bay Community Power Authority and first reading of the Community Choice Energy Ordinance. And this, Mr. Collins, you going to introduce the item?
Yeah, we just need some assistance.
ASAP, or AGP, if we can get some assistance out here with the...
Our planning director, Scott Graham.
Video or, or, yeah.
Uh-oh.
Jesse, are you out there?
And I just need the...
Okay, great. Thank you, Jesse.
Hello. All right. Thank you. Yes, good evening, Scott Collins, City Manager, and here to present kind of a new wrinkle in the Community Choice Energy saga. I'm here to present kind of the city side, and then we have Chris Reed, the City of Slow Sustainability Manager, who also, as the mayor mentioned, has double duty, bringing the same item forward to his council this evening, later this evening. So with no further ado, we'll move forward. The recommendation before you is a bit lengthy, but basically it's just to receive kind of the update and then introduce a new ordinance, in essence, taking, undoing the existing ordinance that created a community choice aggregation between the city of Slow and the city of Morro Bay, adopting a resolution that the two entities join Monterey Bay Community Power, and then ultimately work out who would be the representative between the city of Slow and Morro Bay on that, on that new entity, and then direct staff to work on an MOU to figure out how, how those, that seat would be assigned moving forward. So we'll go briefly over the history of the project. Chris will interject and talk about the regulatory change that's created the pivot that we're going to talk about tonight as an opportunity to join the Monterey Bay Community Power. And then if that's the direction, there's the ordinance and the resolution that would need to be approved tonight to begin that process. So as council and the community knows, we've discussed this for many years, about this opportunity whereby, basically, you give another choice to ratepayers on the electricity side. You know, in most, most communities, at least prior to Community Choice Energy coming along, you had no choice. You were part of PG&E or SDG&E, if you're in Southern California, other utility company, how they bought, bought, and what level of green energy they purchased and what the pricing was. With CCEs, you have the ability to control the source, and the government sort of acts, and JPA, they act as the purchaser, and we maintain the revenues. It doesn't go to shareholders, and those monies could be used to either pay down rates for ratepayers and/or create local economic development opportunities through, you know, greening, green energy projects. And ultimately, what that means for you is potentially lower rates and more control at the local level. The history for this project, the city of Slow and Morro Bay have both been looking into this for quite some time. City Council here in Morro Bay did receive information in 2013. Since that time, it's been continued as a city goal. In 2017, the mayor of Slow wrote a letter to all cities asking if they'd be interested in working together as a, kind of a regional CCE, to pursue these opportunities and benefit our local ratepayers. City of Morro Bay said, yes, we'd like to, we'd like to consider that, and began a partnership in about April of 2018. City of Slow's done a tremendous amount of work to bring on a contractor who was working on a deferred compensation model whereby they'd be paid for their services later on after the CCE was launched. We've made great headway. Both entities approved the ordinances and passed resolutions to form this new entity called the Central Coast Community Energy Program. And then we received bad news from the Public Utilities Commission, which Chris will talk about a little bit later. The first JPA meeting was last week at the city of Slow's council chambers, and it may be the last, the first and last, depending on kind of the direction that we get from this council and they get from theirs. So I'll now turn it over to Chris to kind of talk about the complex, but somewhat simple ruling that we got from the PUC.
Thanks, Scott. Chris Reed, City of San Luis Obispo Sustainability Manager. And I'm really talking tonight, I guess, as interim staff for the JPA that we created, Central Coast Community Energy. Last time I was here and we had the opportunity to talk, it was, again, as Scott noted, to pass, adopt the resolution, pass the ordinance to create a new legal entity for the purpose of hosting the Community Choice Energy Program. At that time, we had also presented some concerns we had with an upcoming Public Utilities Commission proceeding that was, that was in process relating to an exit fee that CCE customers pay called the Power Charge Indifference Adjustment, or the PCIA. And at the time, we had noted that should that decision go one way, the financial projections we had provided that sort of underpinned the decisions that both cities had made to move forward would be confirmed, and that we would have a sort of a clear path ahead of us, and that should they go the other way, so there were two decisions, there were two alternative proposed decisions in front of the PUC, were to go the other way, then we would have significant challenges with our financials. Unfortunately, in October, Public Utilities Commission came back with the unanimous 5-0 decision in favor of the, what was called the Alternative Proposed Decision, which was the bad one for us. And so it was a very unfortunate outcome, one that I think surprised a lot of us, that on the one hand, we have the governor of California signing an executive order for carbon neutrality by 2045, and on the other hand, we have a regulatory agency sort of taking local governments feed out from under them and their ability to achieve that. So it was, it was surprising and very challenging. But we got down to the business of understanding what it meant for our local financials. As you'll recall, we were under contract with the city of, sorry, the city of San Luis Obispo is under contract with a firm called the Energy Authority, or TEA, and we worked closely with them to have an understanding of what the PCIA decision would have on our financials. And in speaking with them, we expect the new decision to mean that that exit fee is going to increase by about 45%, which means a decline in revenue of about 22% per megawatt hour that we're selling. So a steep decrease in our ability to generate the revenue. We needed to keep our doors open while also having the sort of interesting programs in place, and also having rate parity or rate savings relative to PG&E. So knowing all that, we worked with TEA to update our operating assumptions and said, hey, you know, last time we talked, we wanted your financial performance to show a 3% decrease in rates. Let's set that just equal to PG&E. Instead of carbon-free electricity, let's look at 80% carbon-free electricity. Sorry, instead of 100%, let's go down to 80%. Instead of having our own agency, with its own office and own staff, let's look at reduced administrative costs, let's see if we could share resources with the cities, and then let's see what happens with our financials. Well, it turned out that there were still positive revenues under those assumptions, but that the agreement we had with TEA to provide credit services, we couldn't meet the terms of our own contracts with how our system would perform. We couldn't meet our own reserve requirements. So then we said, okay, let's actually go out to a third-party credit solution. So we looked out to River City Bank, which provides credit for a number of community choice entities in California, and said, hey, could we use third-party credit to fund this thing and get it off the ground? And we found that under base projections, that again, there was a path towards being revenue positive, but that we wouldn't really be able to meet our financial projection, our financial reserves that we'd like to hit to be a sound conservative organization and sort of be financially prudent for around eight years, which means we wouldn't be able to increase the carbon-free composition of our electricity for eight years, and we wouldn't really be able to invest in the programs and projects that most of us found so compelling for, for that timeframe. Next slide, please. So the table provided in the staff report and provided in the attachment, this is the updated financial projections that illustrate what I just talked about. And so we certainly can answer questions about the whole table, but just for the sake of expediency, it's going to focus on column A here. So column A, this is a two-city scenario, city of San Luis Obispo and Morro Bay. Again, you see same rates as PG&E, 80% carbon-free, lower admin costs. And then we get to the startup loan row. This is the first significant change. That was a bit of a warning flag for us. The Energy Authority was willing to offer a interest-free credit facility for a number of upfront fees that a new CCE has to pay. Once we are no longer able to access that credit facility, that actually would have to transfer to the third-party credit solution, which means that as part of that, as you'll recall, we had previously asked for about $1 million in bridge funding through third-party credit that each city would have to guarantee somehow. Well, as a result of this change, this would put the cities on the hook for about $2.1 million in loan guarantee. As you continue down the table, again, you see the cumulative net revenue at year three, this would be cash on hand at year three. We see about $3.1 million, and we would be able to meet the requirements of that third-party credit facility in that scenario. But if you keep going down, you would see, as of year three, we'd only have about 17% of an annual operating costs as cash on hand. So our reserves would be very meager at year three. And again, to get to the reserves that we'd like to see around 40% of annual operating costs, it would take us into year eight. The next slide just illustrates, that's under a, you know, sort of base scenario if everything's going well and as expected, given what we know about the regulatory and energy market world today. If we were to see any even sort of moderate changes in that, so another 2.5% change in the PCIA, or 2% decrease in PG&E's rates from what we expect, we'd actually start to see negative cash flows in a number of these, particularly in scenario B. But in scenario A, we'd still see a positive cash flow, but we're talking about $600,000 cash in hand at the end of year three. That would no longer allow us to meet our credit requirements for third-party banking, so we would essentially make it impossible to operate in that way. And even if we had the opportunity to raise that debt, or that credit, rather, the ability to raise that capital, we're still looking at more than 10 years before we hit what we'd like to see in reserves. So as a result of those financial projections, staff came forward, if you can go to the next slide. Staff came forward at the first and Central Coast Community Energy meeting with a recommendation. And so after doing all this research and all this work, finding that it is still potentially a path forward, but a very risky one, we reached out to Monterey Bay Community Power, which had been a consistent Plan B for some... which had been a consistent Plan B for some time, and asked, inquired about membership, inquired about their financial health, about programs and projects that were in the pipeline for them. And so as a result, the staff recommendation at that first Community Choice, sorry, Central Coast Community Energy Board meeting was, in fact, to refer this decision back to the member cities and to join Monterey Bay Community Power.
Thank you. And another thing to note here, under both of those tables, you see C and D, and those were looking at other additional cities joining the CCE. I don't know which ones in particular, but we know that, you know, Paso had been considering and Grover Beach and maybe some others. So we at least wanted to throw those in, and you can really see it doesn't really adjust the big picture, if you will.
Right. We do see additional cash on hand at year three. We see the ability to meet some of the minimum performance standards of the third-party credit requirements, but still, when you look at the ability to accumulate the reserves that we'd like to see before investing other programs, we're still looking out into the late 2020s, which is a long time indeed.
So ultimately, the interim staff for the JPA brought forward a recommendation after, you know, that really disappointing and very challenging ruling from the PUC that's sort of disrupted Community Choice Energy across the board. We did reach out to Monterey Bay Community Power. That had sort of been one of the alternatives, had been out there since we really took up this discussion earlier in 2018 and prior to. I was fortunate enough to be a part of Monterey Bay Community Power, the formation, when I worked for the City of Santa Cruz, and saw that spring to life with three counties, San Benito, Monterey, and Santa Cruz County, and almost, I think, 19 jurisdictions therein participating. And they've been able to launch and been quite successful ahead of this ruling. And they're also in the mode of understanding that this does affect their bottom line, and they're looking for ways to grow as well. So it is an existing program that covers those three counties. I believe all incorporated cities, with the exception of King City, are part of that JPA. How that works, a lot of thought had been put into that. So basically, they maintain parity with PG&E. However, in order to incentivize folks from opting out within the year, they offer rebates towards the end of the year, a 3% equivalent. And so that keeps people hooked, because ultimately, this thing works based on, you know, how many people stay in the program, and that's a very important part of the equation. So they figured that that's worked, and it's proven out by having $40 million in reserves. Their premium product is 100% renewable. They do offer tiers for those who want to purchase, you know, potentially greener energy, but their base rate really does really hit kind of the same goals that we have for the CCE. The governance and representation, the way it works, is that there's a policy board, an operations board, and a community advisory council, much like we had established for our JPA. 50,000 resident communities, including the county and the municipalities therein, have a full seat, and those that have less have a rotating shared seat. And as I mentioned, they have very healthy reserves, because they got out ahead of all these changes, paid off all of their debt that they had with River City Bank, and have $40 million reserved. So they're able to look at rates, they're able to look at programming, they're able to look at economic development opportunities related to green energy. And as I mentioned, a lot of the same goals and objectives that are literally put into the JPA are almost verbatim with what is in the Central Coast Community Energy JPA. So there's a lot of commonality, and certainly a lot of opportunity, and a stronger, much stronger financial position than we would head into if we were to pursue moving forward. Should that be the direction of the city council, we would need to begin the implementation process, so that there's a first reading on the ordinance that's provided. There's also a need to do the resolution to join the MBPCP, and I think there was one issue with that resolution, and we needed to include two cities that were left out of one of the exhibits, and Lori will look into that. But ultimately, it's the same. It's a nonsubstantive change, and those are all included in the packet. So that is, in a nutshell, what we're recommending. So yeah, here's, I think this is ours, right? Yeah. Okay, same thing. Okay. So if council is supportive of that direction, this would be the first reading tonight. City of Slow is doing theirs tonight, and then there'd be the Monterey Bay Community Power Joint Operations and Policy Board Meeting tomorrow to consider both Morro Bay and the City of Slow joining their program. If that's acceptable, then there'd be a second reading, both at City of Slow and City of Morro Bay, on the 27th of this month. The Monterey Bay Community Power Policy Board would approve us joining, and we'd begin implementation, which means we'd be able to provide this service to our community members in January of 2019. So we'd be able to stay on the same schedule we had sort of plotted for the City of Morro Bay and City of Slow JPA. The alternatives, there are far more than this, of course, but the main ones is that we, you could direct staff to return to the board and maybe reconsider creating a regional program. That's certainly an option. We understand that part of the issue of joining a group that's outside of our community is the loss of local control. Of course, if we don't join them, then we have no control. It all is relinquished to PG&E. So there's certainly something to consider. The other opportunity is just to really kind of sit and wait and see what happens and not pursue CCEs at this time. And there's variations within, but that's kind of a high-level overview, and Chris and I can answer any questions that councilmen have.
Okay. With that, we'll look for questions. Red and Marla, as our members, do you guys want to start off with questions? So Red?
Chris or Scott, how much do we owe TEA for the work that they have done for us?
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. If I could pull it up. All told, the City of San Luis Obispo, through our different contracts with the different CCE service providers, we owe approximately $66,000. TEA specifically, it's, the first invoice was for $25,000, and we'll probably receive another one for about $5,000.
The first part of what you said was that this San Luis Obispo's...
Sorry. So we have, we've contracted with three separate entities for the purpose of launching a CCE program. So the first was the Energy Authority. The second was Lean Energy. They've advised on the formation of the JPA. And then Richards Watson Gershon, who they gave us legal support in drafting the JPA. Each of the resolutions that come before us come through support from RWG staff lawyers. And then they also staffed the initial CCE meeting. So they were general counsel for that first board meeting.
Okay. So, and then is Morro Bay liable for 20% of that $66,000?
There's no contractual or legal liability, so I think we had talked about an AD/20 split at one point, but I think we'll defer to you on your preference for paying that back.
We did want to maintain that commitment. I think, looking at what we agreed to as part of those costs, assuming 20%, I think at the high end, we came up with $12,000 that the city would be responsible for if we wanted to maintain that commitment.
Okay. And then there's some additional costs to developing the implementation plan?
Correct. So when I said there's three contracts that we had, there's actually a fourth cost center or cost source, and that is paying to have the implementation plan for Monterey Bay Community Power updated. That includes, Scott's estimate includes that total.
Okay. All right. And then, Chris, at your presentation last week, you also talked about the opportunity for small business generators possibly being able to, in San Luis Obispo County, being able to sell energy to NBCPA through this agreement? So we would be supporting some local entrepreneurial enterprises?
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. MBCP released an RFO for local power purchase for between one and, I think it's one and a half and two megawatt generators. So, for example, in San Luis Obispo, out at our landfill, they're developing a landfill gas capture that's about a megawatt and a half. There's a couple of solar, small solar developments that are proposed at about a megawatt to megawatt and a half that would be eligible. Should note that, as a result of the PCIA occurring, the decision coming through, they've actually paused that RFO, just to ensure that it's a financially prudent decision for them, but they intend on, as I understand it, reopening that shortly.
Okay. Thank you. That's all. All right. Thanks. Marla?
Okay, sure. Thank you. Yes, and thank you very much, Chris. So just to, maybe this is the same question that Red asked, but I just want to verify, what are the costs associated with joining Monterey Bay?
Thank you, Councilmember McPherson. The only costs to join, so there are no entrance fees or membership fees. They've just requested that we pay to do the technical analysis required to amend their implementation plan, which is a regulatory filing required by the Public Utilities Commission when a new agency joins a JPA like this.
Okay. And would all of the programs that they currently offer to their customers be available to our customers?
Yes, yes. In fact, this was an especially important issue for us. We went on Friday to have lunch with their CEO and all of their senior staff, and this was a major question of ours, and wanted to get real direct clarity on this. And yes, in fact, any program they offer would be available across their entire service territory.
Okay. And we, at our meeting, talked about the issue of branding, and I'm wondering if you could explain that for folks and kind of what you've learned from Monterey Bay as to their willingness to perhaps change the name, and to what extent would that inhibit our customers from wanting to join?
Monterey Bay Community Power is a relatively new entity. They've been serving customers for close, coming up on a year now. And so on the one hand, you know, they're a new entity with a new brand that they're trying to build recognition with. But on the other hand, their CEO and their senior staff have expressed a clear interest in as they look to the south to grow their program through our cities and our county of rebranding to something with a Central Coast name, potentially even Central Coast Community Energy, to the point where their IT staff asked if we had purchased that URL, and since we hadn't, they decided they were going to go ahead in just in case. So it's, we know, we don't know what the future holds. Perhaps they, you know, won't eventually follow up on that, but based on initial discussions, I have reason to believe that that is an intention of theirs in the midterm to do that.
Okay. And this was a question I asked you at the meeting, and I'll ask it here, just so that folks understand. Approximately, and again, I'm not looking for an exact number, but what percent of the total customer base would Morro Bay and San Luis represent if we join Monterey?
The electrical load of Monterey Bay and San Luis Obispo would be approximately 8% of the Monterey Bay Community Power load.
Okay. So we would basically have one seat on the...
Right. So we'd be one of 12 seats, and we'd represent 8% of their load, so something like 6% of the total load once we're all in.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. I think those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marla. John?
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Scott, for the information. Just to be clear, I'm trying to get down to a bottom-line number for Morro Bay's exit of this program and entry into the new initiative. Total cost outlay for Morro Bay would be?
$12,000.
$12,000, okay. I didn't know if it was 80%, 20% of the $12,000, or $12,000 was it. So, got it. Makes it good. Chris, could you speak to the current Monterey program for allowing individuals to potentially offer up some of the savings to other low-income ratepayers and describe how that works? And could you also describe maybe what percent of current users might be utilizing that program?
I can describe, and thank you, Councilmember Heading, I can describe the programs themselves. I don't have utilization information on hand, but happy to provide that afterward. There are two, in addition to the two rate offerings that Mr. Collins provided, both carbon-free base case and then the 100% renewable, there is, I think it's called MB Care, where that 3% rebate that a customer would have, instead of receiving that back, they could just donate that to a program that would then support low-income energy efficiency or renewable energy projects. There's also something, it's like MB Local, I don't recall the name exactly, but that would also allow someone to just donate that 3% to go into a local generation project. But I don't know how robust that participation is in those programs or where those are headed.
Do you know if an individual, let's say we joined the Monterey Initiative, and an individual decided to opt in for that and contribute their 3%, if it would go to Morro Bay specifically, or does it go into a pooled program that's distributed across the board to all potential ratepayers?
I don't know for sure. I know that most CCA programs pool their resources and then redistribute as consistently across the organization as possible, but I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Have you gentlemen, and/or potentially the subcommittee members or the board-appointed JPA members, as it exists, discussed the possibility of how the board position might work for the split between Morro Bay and San Luis Obispo, and maybe what your thoughts are with regard to that?
We discussed that there be a process to determine that. That's pretty much as far as we got, that Derek Johnson, the city manager, and I would sit down and formulate an MOU that would be brought back to the council. There's the policy board and the operations board, so we could see a variety of different options to play out there. Given that the City of Slow has 80% of the load for the two entities, it may make sense that they, just out of the gate, they represent the two communities to start, and then we maybe talk about alternating. But somehow, maybe, you know, they're the seat, and then Morro Bay, a council member is the alternate, and the same would go for Derek and myself. That could be a way to start, and then we can talk about rotating, just like they do for some of the other jurisdictions up north.
Got it. And currently, what would be the potential if other cities within the county joined with regard to new board positions? Is it per 50,000 population? Or how would it be determined if San Luis Obispo County says, we opt in, and Paso says, we opt in, and Tascadero says, we'd like to opt in? Any idea how those board seats might be assigned?
Yeah, thank you. It's an excellent question. So we asked their CEO and some of their senior staff how that would go. So just assume a full county-wide participation, all seven incorporated cities and the unincorporated county, and assume that takes a couple of years, so Slow City crosses the 50,000 resident threshold. And so in their thinking, there would likely be four seats in that scenario. Unincorporated county, City of Slow, and then perhaps a north county and a south county, or coastal and inland. Or if Slow doesn't cross that population threshold, perhaps there's sort of three shared seats. But Santa Cruz, this county of Santa Cruz is sort of similar, and, I mean, it's different in a lot of ways, but from a population and organization perspective, it's similar, and they have roughly four, I think they have four seats. So, Councilmember Heading, if I may respond also to how we collaborate, I think taking the, you know, Central Coast Community Energy hat off and putting Slow City's staff hat on, I just like, would like to communicate that participating and collaborating across the cities has been extremely fruitful. And one of the things that I think we're very sad about in not having this Central Coast Community Energy platform is losing a real opportunity to have deep commitment to regionalism and all the productive, you know, fruit that bears from that. And so I think in committing to creating an MOU for sharing the seat, I think it's more than just who goes to the meetings when, but also providing a process by which we continue to collaborate and make intentional decisions as representatives of our seat.
Great. Thank you, Chris. The process for determining within the existing Monterey organization whom they're going to contract with, like you've mentioned a couple in here, joint procurement project with the 200-megawatt wind farm, et cetera. How are those decisions made? Are they made by an ops committee, the board, more or less the purchasing options or opportunities?
Depending, it depends on, I think it's typically based on kind of the threshold, the dollar amount. I think if it's over a certain amount, then those decisions are all made by the policy board. The operations board makes recommendations. So anything of that nature would be made by the policy board, which is either council members or mayors of those jurisdictions they represent.
Okay. So as an example, if a large wind farm were built way offshore in Morro Bay and presented an opportunity, that... and presented an opportunity, that decision would then be made by the full board?
That's right.
With regard to not just cost, but also availability, and I imagine other factors. So, it's not just lowest-cost provider wins? Do you know?
I think it's on a, it'd be on such a case-by-case scenario, it's, it's hard to answer, um, that, that specific question. But I do think that, um, being part of a larger organization and, and having the opportunity to influence that organization, when it comes time for the offshore wind farm to have off-takers, they'll be able to influence one of the major off-takers in a meaningful policy way is, is a really big opportunity, and one of the reasons that I think, um, we developed this, the recommendation as it stands.
I get that. Last question would be, um, rather than looking north, um, why not look south?
As far as joining the existing program?
Right.
The closest CCA, CCE to the south of us is Clean Power Alliance, which is the Los Angeles County, and also they include membership in Ventura County as well. Uh, they provide service for Southern California Edison customers, and Monterey Bay is the closest one that provides service for PG&E customers. There's nothing legally that prevents one from serving multiple customers, but logistically, it's, it's very challenging.
Got it. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt?
Sure. Sure, Chris, and as you guys, um, have broken down what's going on with this application process, could you kind of explain the speed that, I mean, right now, we're trying to do this, you're going to go present San Luis, I'm trying to do this, and I understand for the next, um, year coming up in January, but is there any benefit in doing it so quickly? Knowing that this, um, one process that we're not going to, um, go after it? Is there, can we join Monterey the next year?
Thank you, Councilmember. The, the major constraint that's before us is that, that due to another CPUC rule earlier this year, that also has made life in CCEs a bit more challenging, is that to create a new CCE or to join an existing CCE, you have to do that by January first of a, of a calendar year, and then wait one whole year before you can start serving your customers. So, this opportunity, this path that, uh, we're pursuing via the staff recommendation would allow us to begin serving customers in 2020. Should we wait until January second, or should we wait until next year? Then we would have to wait till 2021 for service.
Okay. Thank you. And then also, in terms of, and I think it was brought up by different, um, folks up here, in terms of losing control, um, and going into a much bigger board and having a partial vote going into it with San Luis Obispo, um, what sort of benefits could we lose, um, from going to a smaller, um, entity that we had talked about?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Just basic, you know, as, as we were sitting, I think, in the council chambers this last Wednesday, we looked around, and there were two city councilmembers from San Luis Obispo and two from City of Morro Bay. And if we had moved forward, we would have been setting rates and deciding who our vendors were and what type of power we wanted, and how we were going to design our programs. And so, there's, I think there's sort of, being one of two is just more than one of twelve, but there's also very much so, we're in our own community, making our own decisions in our own space. That was a very powerful moment, I think, for, for folks that were in attendance there.
And then likewise, is the vice versa monetarily speaking true? Going into an established program and doing that, then having it hitting the, and instead of just pushing up a hill to get to some sort of equilibrium, you're hitting the ground running with those benefits?
That's right. And so while, while that was a, you know, an exciting moment for folks, I also think that we lost local control, or we had local control over running a marginal organization for seven or eight years, and then hopefully, if everything went well, then getting to do what we wanted to control locally. Uh, whereas, you know, we still have one twelfth of us say over a, a program with a robust financial, um, standing, and that's doing really progressive, interesting things in the energy efficiency and renewable energy space. Um, and so still being able to influence that, and, you know, one, one over twelve is, is infinitely more than, than zero over whatever PG&E's denominator is.
Sure. And I guess, Scott, this is a question to you. In terms of logistically speaking, distance-wise, since, um, different counties, and I realize they go up to Santa Cruz County, but just in a, in the linear fashion, would we be hamstrung by any way by being distance-wise that far away?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. Uh, you know, obviously, being able to connect in, in seconds via text or, or email or phone calls, I mean, we're, we're, you know, and Tom Hibachi is the CEO, he makes himself available. He was willing to come tonight, and I told him, you know, "You don't need to drive the three hours, just to come tonight to go back up to have your own board meeting the next day." But they see the value in this partnership and, and potentially creating a Central Coast kind of allegiance of, of all the, the cities and counties therein. Um, I, you know, it will be, you know, on a quarterly basis, uh, whoever's in that seat will have to travel the distance to go up there for the meetings, uh, but beyond that, I don't see a real issue with that. I mean, what, what Chris spoke to, uh, the, the two big issues, it's, it's the local control, um, kind of versus, uh, financial sustainability. I know that's what we're seeking as an organization here. Certainly, um, we'll, we'll miss that opportunity. We'd have to have a, a direct partnership with City of Slow, but I think we can gain a lot of the things that would have been inherent in that partnership as well.
Councilmember, if I, if I may as well, the City of, uh, Santa Cruz County also have remote meeting facilities that they're able to participate for, in the Policy Board meetings, and so we'd like to build the relationships and hopefully attend as many in-person meetings as possible, but there's a technological solution to that distance as well.
Hi, Chris, welcome. Uh, you said that Monterey Community Choice Energy is, uh, a hundred percent renewable. Did I understand that correctly?
Carbon-free.
Carbon-free, excuse me. So then, um, do you know how many customers within their district are actually participating in the program?
Uh, as I understand it, they have a three to four, maybe five percent opt-out rate, so, um, the, the vast majority of the customers in the area are participating.
And then, um, my other question is, we spoke earlier, just before the meeting, about, challenging the CPUC ruling, and can you explain that? You said that there was a CAL CCE, maybe you could elaborate a little bit more on that?
Sure. So, there's a statewide, uh, thank you, Mayor, there's a statewide trade organization called CAL CCA. It's a, represents all of the operational Community Choice Energy, uh, programs in the entire state. Uh, they lobby on behalf of, of the programs. And, you know, I think that the decision coming out of the PUC was shocking, the fact that it was a unanimous decision was shocking, and in response, there was some discussion around, um, potentially pursuing, um, petitions, um, or other mechanisms. I, I don't know if, uh, if that's moving forward, but certainly, there's also interest in, uh, pursuing a legislative fix, so potentially having, um, a law come out of Sacramento that could remedy the PCIA. But I should also just note that those are speculative at this point, that, you know, I don't, we don't know of any specific, um, sponsors of bills or, or language.
And so, just so I understand this, the, the PCIA, as it's presented, is to, for C, for organizations like potentially Morro Bay, San Luis, Obispo, the Central Coast, um, Energy, uh, Community Choice Energy. The purpose behind that is that PG&E, whoever, whether it's Southern Caloris and PG&E, have invested into generation. So, the reason for this was to compensate for that depletion of that. They've, they've already made investments in there. Is that, is that accurate? Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
The primary purpose of the PCIA, um, but by law, if, if, say you and I are entering, are, are both energy consumers, and I leave for a CCA program, me leaving can't cause your energy bill to increase, so my, uh, power charge has to be indifferent, your, your charge has to be indifferent for my actions. So, that's where the adjustment comes from there. And so essentially, PG&E has procured electricity on both of our behaves in the past for, for future use. And when I leave, if the value of that electricity is less than the contract they hold, they're, they'll stand to lose money on selling the power I would otherwise have consumed. And so, that, that delta is what gets charged to the CCA customer to ensure that you, as you stay behind, stay whole.
Thanks for that. And so, but the same thing applies if we go to Monterey. The same thing's going to happen, it's just that we're joining an entity that, that doesn't apply.
The, the PCIA is going to affect on a per-customer basis, um, all CCAs. The PCIA, rather, on a per-customer basis, will affect all CCAs. So, the marginal, um, revenue per customer will be smaller.
Okay. All right, thanks. That, sure. Okay. I, I, that's more clear. The other part of the question then is, that isn't necessarily infinite, so this particular charge that we see, um, that, as time goes on, that's got to change. So, I, I don't understand the ruling in, in how this applies to all CCAs or CCEs, however we want to choose to call them. I don't see how that's going to apply in three years or five years. That, that number can't stay constant. It's got, it just has to adjust with the market.
That's correct, and it, it does adjust with the market, and, and we model out into the next, I think it's six or seven years. We see sort of mid-decade, or, or maybe twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, starts, it peaks and then starts to tail off into the latter part of the next decade. One of the challenging, uh, components of the, the PUC decision had to do with legacy generation, so it's not just the power procured on, on your behalf, but also, as you alluded to earlier, the power plants built on your behalf. Those costs are new costs added into the PCIA, which is why that, that cost shot up so much, and, and has a bit of a longer tail to it.
Okay. I think those are all the questions. So, we can get to, are any of the questions? We can get to public comment on this? Yep?
Uh, I forgot to ask you about what, what, um, if we decide in two years, it's feasible to do it locally, what's the exit fee or what are the exit costs for getting out of Monterey? I forgot to ask about that, sorry.
So, the JPA does provide, uh, a process for leaving the, the, the organization. Essentially, you have six months prior to when you want to leave, you have to announce that. Similar to the PCIA, they would then see how much your value is worth, if power is worth. But they can also, then also tell you, uh, if you stay on for one and a half years or two years, we can, uh, zero out your contracts, and so they, they give you a dollar or time amount to leave. So, while there, there is an out, um, and our, uh, on our side, uh, staff at San Luis Obispo, we're seeing this as a long-term decision.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Chris. We'll go into, um, public comment. First up, Eric Viem, and then Nick Andre, and then Tom Pastore.
Honorable Mayor and Council, my name is Eric Viem. Uh, I am Chair of the Slow Climate Coalition and a resident of San Luis Obispo. Uh, I want to start by saying I'm very much supportive of, uh, San Luis Obispo City and Morro Bay and the communities of San Luis Obispo County and Northern Santa Barbara County, joining Monterey Bay Community Power and expanding that vision to the entire Central Coast, rebranding to, uh, uh, the Central Coast Community Energy Program. Um, I've been working in this area for a decade now and have, uh, thought long and hard. In fact, Monterey Bay, in two thousand and fifteen, there was an opportunity for us to engage with Monterey Bay Community Power, and, um, and we didn't take that opportunity at the time, and so that is, it is, uh, we've retained that as a strong Plan B throughout this time. And so we were aware of the risk of PCIA. Uh, your, your staff and city staff were, were diligent in, uh, building contingency around that, and I think that we have an extremely strong opportunity going forward in, in joining in with Monterey Bay. To the, to the extent, uh, Councilmember Heading, you're, you're referring to, um, the, some of the projects that are recently in the news for Monterey Bay Community Power. They just contracted for the largest solar and storage project in the country, and growing, uh, joining an organization with some more scale actually puts us in a better position to facilitate development of our offshore wind resource and having a lot, larger potential off-taker for that. Um, you know, I, I think that, uh, as we move forward here, um, there's, the challenges that we face are, as were spoken, how do we, uh, maintain community engagement, uh, and how do we drive, uh, the center of gravity of, of the benefit to our region and, and to provide a leadership for deep dark decarbonization? And I think that's going to, that we should be thoughtful in, uh, selecting, uh, really strong and outspoken, uh, members of your council or the Slow City Council to, to bring that voice to the, the Policy Board. And also, just want to say, we had a very positive election, uh, on Tuesday, and so, uh, there are many councils across the, uh, our county that are very well-suited to join us in the following year. So, very much excited and want to just strongly support your council in joining City of San Luis Obispo in, uh, in expanding the vision of Central Coast Community Energy to, to the entire Central Coast. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Eric. Uh, Nick Andre?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Nick Andre. I'm the co-chair of the Slow County Progressives, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of that organization and our almost three thousand members countywide. We would like to thank the council for considering Community Choice Energy, and we strongly support its adoption. The Monterey Bay Community Power Authority is a proven and established program that reduces risks to the city. It will not only increase the use of, of clean renewable energy, it will lead to additional local control, even though it's not as much as initially thought, and will provide equivalent or lower energy bills for residents over the long term. It will also ensure that the revenue generated will be reinvested in a community program that benefits all residents, rather than going to investor profits that benefit a select few. It's a win-win solution for the environment and for the economy. We thank, we thank the city for its forward-looking approach and city staff's hard work. We're excited at the prospect of seeing communities join together for the betterment of society as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Pastore? Welcome, Tony.
Hi. Good evening, council, staff, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm Tony Pastore, resident of Morro Bay, and, um, pleased to hear the reports from, um, both Scott and Chris tonight. Um, I know everybody's put in, um, a lot of work for a long time on this project, and it seems kind of an interesting confluence, um, to give us an opportunity to join, as everybody knows, sort of a, a steaming forward ship here that, um, is, is right, meaning it's moving in a good direction. Um, it's healthy, um, its ballast is in the right places, and, um, this is a, a great opportunity for us to, to pivot, um, you know, obviously away from sort of the, the, um, more local vision, um, to a broader local vision, which actually is kind of interesting because by growing our, um, our influence by joining a larger group, we actually have more buying power, um, in the markets, and, um, I can, I can clearly see that going forward, this has, you know, some great benefits that otherwise would not be, um, available to us. So, um, I appreciate staff's recommendation, um, and, uh, the proposal before you, um, I'm in favor of, and, um, look forward to, uh, moving forward with, with the, the joining of, uh, San Luis, Morro Bay, and Monterey Bay, um, to form the Central Coast or whatever it becomes called. But it sounds like they got the URL, so, uh, we're in good shape going forward, so, thanks.
Thanks. Thank you, Tony. Walter Heath? Welcome, Walter.
Thanks again, Mayor and Council. Walter Heath, resident of Morro Bay. I just, coming into this fresh, uh, wondering what, um, you know, the, this opportunity, how it compares to, uh, potential opportunity with the Morro Bay Wind Farm situation, uh, whether if, you know, going it alone and deriving some benefit from that, uh, wind farm, I don't know where it stands, you all may know more than I do, in terms of, you know, a guaranteed lower rate, uh, to what extent would the wind farm meet all of Morro Bay's power needs? Do, uh, possibilities for some form of revenue sharing, either by reduced rates or what have you, exist in negotiations with the wind farm folks? I, I don't mean to be throwing, uh, a monkey wrench into the works here, but I hope that that's part of the, uh, council discussion, because I, it seems to me, we're, we're sitting on a pretty huge opportunity here with that wind farm, and, um, we might be good, as opposed to being kind of a minor player with a, with a, you know, a smaller seat at the table, so to speak. Just putting it out there. Thanks.
Thanks, Walter. Uh, that concludes all the speaker slips for public comment on this item. I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. I do have, I just want to fill up with one question in regards to the wind farm and how it applies to Morro Bay, and it would be to Joe. So, legally, if we are, if we are in a contract with Monterey Bay, the Monterey CCE, and ten years from now, we have the wind farm, and there are some negotiations, there's a lot of uncertainties with this, um, but we're, we do have the point of connection. I, this is all public knowledge, you know, Alice made her, a presentation, there's others that are going towards this. At that time, as, as we get into negotiations, um, for any kind of a contractual agreement with that entity, whoever it may be, would we be legally prohibited by being part of the Monterey CCE to enter into other... Monterey CCE to enter into other arrangements that might have to do with receiving the generations from that? Or even a percentage of the output of the generation, percent kilowatt hours generated, let's say?
If what you're asking is, as a member of the CCE, the city can only provide its customers, that's not its customers, it's the CCE's customers.
Yeah.
That the city somehow would be prevented from being able to find another source of electricity that it could then provide to customers that were CCE customers? The ability to do, you don't have the ability to do that without having approvals from the PUC to be able to do that. So it's sort of back to where we are now, where you'd be trying to be on your own, creating your own CCE. And if you wanted to do that, then there's a whole different can of worms. And you could do that by the withdrawing from the CCE, as was discussed earlier.
Right.
But that's going to cause a lot of brain damage.
There's some uncertainties when that does arrive. And I think we're hopeful that something like that does arrive. But I think we're in a different position in negotiating how that arrangement might work. And, you know, no different than Rule 1090 and how, you know, any of us can have contracts with the city. I don't know if that applies, how that would apply with with us as a city and then taking on generation with a potential wind farm, but then we're with Monterey or Central Coast.
There wouldn't be a 1090 issue.
Well, I know that, but I mean, that was the example. Yeah. I, so, doesn't seem like there's a clear answer on that because there's a lot of uncertainties. Okay.
I think it's an interesting law school question.
Okay. We won't go there. Okay. All right. Thanks. All right. So any follow-up questions or discussion you want to leave us off and discussion? Marlis and then Red as our.
Thank you. Yeah. I'd be happy to.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, Red and I had the advantage of attending the first and one and only JPA meeting. So we got an advance notice of this information. And it was compelling to, I think, all four of the JPA members that with this change from the CPUC, it was simply too risky, just financially too risky to go out on our own, especially just two communities. And, you know, we pursued this idea of, do they want us? Are they willing to cooperate with us? Are they willing to negotiate? And they, and the answers seemed to be that yes, they are, that that obviously we would be much better off in a larger organization because in this game, the numbers matter. And the bigger you are, the more likely you are to succeed. So I think we had all of our questions answered and satisfied in terms of what they're willing to do and how we would proceed forward. And I really appreciate all of the work of our staff and also the San Luis Obispo city staff for really doing this in a huge hurry. But I fully support our joining the Monterey Bay Community Energy? Is that what it's called? Okay. And the resolutions that you have proposed. The only comment I would make contrary to some of your recommendations, Scott, is that we wait to designate someone from the Morro Bay City Council to participate, at least until they've accepted us and until you probably have worked out a memorandum of understanding with San Luis so we have a better understanding of who's going to participate and who's going to be an alternate and how we're going to work out that joint. And I really would hope that we do maintain communication between the two cities moving forward so that we are, we stay in the loop and we are fully engaged in moving forward. So those are my comments.
Thanks, Marlis. Red?
Thank you. First, I want to express my admiration for the work that Chris Reed has done on this project. I don't know when he sleeps, but he has provided us bountiful information, answered every question, been available at all times, and I really, really appreciate that. The reason that our communities want to move forward with CCE are twofold in my mind. One is to support sustainable energy, get away from carbon-producing, yeah, carbon-producing energy. Second is that we want to provide low-cost energy for our customers. And with the CPUC decision, we're not able to do that on our own. One of the things that impressed me last week when we were wrestling with this is the similarity of goals between the Central Coast Community Energy and the Monterey Community Power Authority, almost word for word. So we will be joining with an entity that has the same goals that we do, that provides sustainable energy, and that provides that energy at a competitive rate with PG&E, but with a rebate. So it's cheaper energy. So I think we need to move forward with this. I think this is our best path toward reaching the goals that we want. But at the same time, I want to echo what Eric told us last week is that we need to advertise the role that the CPUC has taken in working against the interests of the governor and the legislature in taking California down the sustainable energy path. The CPUC took an adversarial action that was self-serving and protective of their giant monopoly energy generator. And we need to tell people that they did that and that that was wrong. So that's all I have.
Matt?
I too, I agree with Marlis and Red. I agree moving forward on this. My answers have been, I mean, my questions have been answered. And so given this and given the control and what it would bring to our community, I think is very vital. And so I'm supporting.
John?
Great. And thank you to the subcommittee for your one meeting and initial work. I know you did spend a lot of time embedding that. And Chris, thank you again so much for your extremely beneficial background and information sharing and your availability. And Scott, working together with our team. And our thanks to your city council as well, please, as you go back and give them the same presentation for the partnership. How interesting that the PUC takes advantage of the ratepayers in difference to the monopoly, I mean oligopoly that's out there. Surprise, surprise, surprise. I'm not surprised at all. It was my expectation. But, but that being said, I agree with Councilman Davis that we need to exploit that negative action that's contrary to where this state is moving. I think this is the right thing to do because of the fact that we're moving towards carbon-free energy. We need to be part of that. This brings scale and clout. That is an advantage, although we lose local control a fair amount. I get that, that that's important. But I do think the timing is now. It positions us for the future, I believe. My question about the exit strategy had specifically to do with wind energy and where the mayor was headed with regard to that. And if we can be advantaged as a county and/or entity, but in difference to the entity as a county, and if there's an okay exit strategy to get us out, to take advantage of that, we need to be aware of that. And that needs to be something that we consider as we move forward. I like the fact that this does advantage the ratepayer significantly out of the gate and that there is a low-income individual subsidy program that can assist ratepayers, especially along the coast where we know the cost of living is very high. That's very impressive to me. And I think the marketing of that is extremely important to those that may be more advantaged and able to contribute to those that are less advantaged and disadvantaged in our communities. And so for all of those reasons, I think there's, the Monterey organization is, seems to be a stellar organization, financially viable, it's the right thing for us to do. I don't think we should wait. I think we should move now. And I fully support everybody else's recommendation to move forward expeditiously with this. Thank you.
Thanks. I'd like to thank our staff again, as well as, along with all our colleagues on council. I came in here much more reluctant than my peers. I think I probably had a more reluctant look at this, probably from the beginning, given my background in the energy field. So I'll respond to some of the CPUC things as well. But coming in here as reluctant as I was, I'll tell you right out of the gate that I will be supporting this. The reluctance and the local control, you know, this whole thing started with how we can really diversify and work differently in the energy field, breaking away into a different energy model as we know it. And that's been taking place for the last 15, 20 years. We should, we should own up to that. As far as the CPUC goes, I think it's really no different than if we opt out of Monterey Bay. I wouldn't necessarily, and I will comment on that, I wouldn't necessarily jump on the bandwagon of highlighting the CPU as in exploiting this. This is just another transition. That's all it is. And, and, and there's been, we've asked our state to regulate and supply electricity for us from a standpoint of economic development, for our livelihoods, for national security. And those investments were made. I don't see that it was necessarily, it was expected to me when you have, if we went out and made those types of investments for a period of time to supply to customers, I understand that. So I don't necessarily, I'm not totally surprised by the CPU's ruling on that. I just feel as though we need to move forward. I'm pleased that our two subcommittee members were, have been involved in this. I'm glad that Monterey has similar, if not identical, goals. That's important to me. There's probably a higher degree of benefit in scale being with Monterey than starting out as San Luis Obispo and Morro Bay. Though I will say, probably the most excited I was about the CCE was when we had California Clean Energy propose to Morro Bay, say that we can take you there. And they were going to do that, and they would carry the financial cost to get us there. Of course, we would pay that over time because they would be managing that. That was pre-PCIA terms. This was in the 2015 era as well. But at that time, we had the option, or the proposal from San Luis Obispo, they were going to do the study and whether or not Santa Barbara County, San Luis Obispo County, Monterey County, or Ventura County, maybe it was Ventura County, wanted to do that. So we took another look at it. And maybe that was a mistake, maybe that's just the way it worked. But here we are now. So those are my comments on that. But again, Chris and Scott and staff, thanks, thanks for all your work. And at this point, I guess we need to make a motion. And I will highlight that we did approve an item on our consent, which changed our regular city council meeting schedule so we can hold a regular city council meeting to do a second reading as needed to, for this ordinance. So that's, that's to be noted. And so unless there's any other comments, I would.
One, one point order on Exhibit B of the, the actual JPA that you would be agreeing to, we need to add all the parties, all the cities and the counties that are there. So I'll just make that change administratively, if that's okay. But for whatever reason, they weren't listed on Exhibit B of the JPA agreement.
So we have four, five recommendations here.
Right. This would be under recommendation three.
Okay. So under recommendation three, we need to include.
So it's adopting Resolution 9118.
Okay.
Which requests membership in the Monterey Bay Community Power Authority and authorizing the city manager to execute the Joint Powers Authority Agreement as amended with MBCPA. That, that actual agreement doesn't include the parties, it's just not listed. So I was going to add that administratively to so.
So the attachment C and?
Yeah. Attachment C, Exhibit, Exhibit B of the attachment C to not confuse things anymore.
And so that would be, so we could say, and parties listed by city manager?
Yeah. There you go. And I think I heard that the council would just stay silent on appointing a council member at this time and, and just direct staff to work on a memorandum of understanding. It includes how the seating would work, but also kind of communication between Slow and Morro Bay. And Chris is probably going to correct me now.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I just may add, for the resolution adopting the JPA, there was a slide in there requesting one minor edit to that resolution, which was to allow the mayor or city manager to sign that JPA agreement. I think that it may need one or both signatures.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm just, for clarification here, I'm going to go ahead and read through all five, or do you have all five recommendations? Can you show all five recommendations?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
I'll go back to them here. Pardon the typos.
Okay. So we have five recommendations to receive and file the financial update introduced by first reading and by title only.
Yeah.
So Joe, we can go through this motion here. Adopt staff recommendations one through five, but to include language that says introduced by first reading only, with further reading waived, ordinance number 618. For the record, do we need to state all of that?
We should read the title.
Okay. So I'm going to read through the motion to adopt all five recommendations, except for, okay, so we're going to delete four. Thank you. Okay. So we're going to adopt, we want to adopt recommendations, approve recommendations one, two, three, and five. And recommendation number two is introduced by first reading, by title only, with further reading waived, ordinance number 618. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Morro Bay, California repealing the existing community choice aggregation ordinance, ordinance number 616, and authorizing the implementation of a community choice aggregation program by participating in Monterey Bay Community Powers Authority's Community Choice Aggregation Program, attachment B. That's the motion. So I need a second.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Lori, so I've read in, so I read the motion, and the motion was to approve four of the five recommendations. That was one, two, three, and five, as listed up on the screen. So recommendation number four was not part of the recommendation or motion. And I included the specific language in the motion, ordinance number 618.
And amending, amending recommendation number three as worded up here, plus adding the, the parties to Exhibit B of that attachment.
Okay. And so on motion, and so to amend my motion, and that would be to include, on recommendation number three, to include at the end of that sentence, parties listed by city manager.
Yeah. And resolution amended as basically allowing the. And, and resolution amended as basically allowing the mayor or the city manager to execute the JPA agreement.
And authorize, and this is also in number three, authorizing the mayor and, and/or the city manager to execute the joint powers authority agreement.
Yep.
So that's the amendment to my, my motion. So I had a motion, and the second was, I got John, but was it, was it Red? Okay. The second was by Red, and so I just read my amendment. Would you second my amendment?
I second the amendment.
Okay. So we have a, sorry, I didn't mean to hog the motion there, Red, but I just wanted to make sure we got through it. So Red was seconding the amendment. I'm just taking a pause and being really diligent about this, Lori, making sure you got it. You're good? Okay. And Joe, we're good on the motion? All right. Good. All right. Any other discussion?
Did you want to add number five now, or do you want a separate motion for that? Directing staff to negotiate.
We, that was part of the motion, one, two, three, and five.
Thank you.
That was part of the motion. Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries five oh. All right, Chris. Good luck, good luck getting there. Is there anything else on this item? Can we just take a short recess before we start with item B1? Is everybody okay? All right. Thank you. All right, Don, we'll, and we'll be right there. We'll take a short recess. Thank you.
Right.
AGP, are you waiting for us? Okay, all right. All right, welcome back, everyone. And we're going to get back started here on item B1. I'll go ahead and introduce the title. Next title, this is a continuous of an appeal of planning commission approval on August 7, 2018 of a conditional use permit, UPO 470. This is a tentative vesting map and mitigation negative declaration for site at 2783 Coral Avenue to allow a six parcel subdivision on a .99 acre site within the cloister subdivision. Note, through a recent action by the California Coastal Commission, the applicant is now required to apply for the immaterial amendment to the original CDP and as such, the City of Morro Bay will void the CDP 530. I just read the title. Is that the whole staff report? Can we get started now, Scott? Okay, all right. Thanks.
To get through this before we have more technical difficulties.
I think we might not have a microphone for you, Nancy.
Technical difficulties?
Okay, if you can, yeah, good, thank you.
So, a little background, planning commission approved this project on August 7, 2018. On August 14, the appellant filed an appeal. City council held a public hearing to consider the appeal on September 25. City council continued the hearing to November 13 today to allow the appellant and the applicant to meet and discuss the plans. This is really what you just read about California Coastal Commission changing determination, so I can move on to the next one. Summary of the original appeal claim, and I've divided these into categories to try to go through them a little quicker. The first three are public notification, vacation rental, and raptor habitat. And the response is the notification was done that exceeds the legal requirement. The vacation rental policy statement in the planning commission hearing was correct, but the cloisters homes are also subject to their own requirements in the CCNRs. And the experts have confirmed that the existing cluster of trees on the site is not suitable habitat for raptors. And in support of the neighbors' comments, the planning commission conditioned the applicant to provide off-site mitigation in an area that is suitable habitat for raptors. Two more claims, the city's right to sell the property. There was a question about that and whether or not the new parcel would participate in the special lighting. It's actually Lighting and Landscape Assessment District. And the staffer's response is the city's right to sell was addressed in several previous public processes, 2005, 2013, 2015, and it's a separate legal issue not related to the pending project approval. The applicant has agreed to participate in the lighting and landscape assessment district, and the city will facilitate how that happens. The three remaining claims relate to the cloisters architectural review process to review and approve the applicant's submittal. These claims were the primary reason the city council continued the hearing and allowed the applicant and the appellant to meet. The claim was that the cloisters architectural review committee did not get to see or approve the plans. And the following is what happened with the applicant. The applicant followed instructions from the cloisters ARC-designated architect representative, Craig Smith, and submitted an application and paid fees for the six proposed schematic home designs on July 18, 2018. Craig Smith provided the applicant with a schematic approval letter on July 23. This is the same process that the City of Morro Bay has received for other proposed homes in the cloisters. The cloisters ARC questioned the suitability of the subdivision. The proposed new parcels meet the Morro Bay Municipal Code standards for residential lots related to size setbacks, and those sizes and setbacks were also established in the 1992 CDP conditions and development standards established for the cloisters subdivision upon approval. The municipal code also requires that single-family residential property provides two parking spaces in a garage. There is no requirement for guest parking in the driveway or outside of the garage for a single-family resident. Two of the homes in the proposed subdivision have spaces for two cars in their driveway. There are four additional parking spaces included in the plans for homes that do not have space to park outside their garage. And this is a site plan that shows the original submittal. And the original plan includes parking for 12 garage parking spaces and eight spaces outside of the garage. And I added the cute little cars so that it was really clear where the parking is. This is the modified plan, and this shows 12 parking spaces within the garage and 10 parking spaces outside of the garage. And this is not the plan that the planning commission approved, and since we don't require parking outside of the garage, it's not something that we would require, but the applicant wanted to show how it was possible to get a few more parking spaces in here. The final claim is the cloisters notification requirements were not met. And the cloisters CCNRs state that the committee shall mail not less than 14 days prior to the date of the design committee meeting, written notice of the committee hearing to the applicant and to the owners of lots which are contiguous to the lot in issue, plus those lots which are across the street affronting the subject lot and which fall wholly or partially within the boundary lines of the subject lot extending across the street, plus those lots which, in the sole opinion of the committee, may be significantly affected. So, that's a long way of saying the immediately adjacent lots. There was no committee design meeting for the original submittal, so there was no notification requirement. Staff is not aware of if the notification requirement was followed for the recent meeting between the applicant and the appellant. There is one lot that meets the non-discretionary notification requirements, which is shown here. It's immediately adjacent to the subject site. So, other than the non-discretionary notification, that one site would be included in their notification requirements, and that site, of course, was included in our notification, which is shown here, 500 feet around the subject site. The appellant and the applicant were asked to meet to review the plans, and they met on October 9, 2018. They did specifically request, the appellant specifically requested city staff not participate in the meeting. The planning commission approval and related condition of approval provide a process for changes to the approved plans. So, if you see plans that the applicant submits as possible solutions for the differences, there is a process through planning commission that we can approve those either administratively or through another planning commission hearing. The architectural review committee approval from the cloisters is not required for the city to render planning decisions. The appellant and the applicant are both here, and since they were part of the meeting that occurred, they probably can give you an update on what occurred in the meeting. Staff recommends that city council adopt resolution 87-18, making the necessary findings to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission approval.
Okay, all right. From this point, we'll ask the applicant and the appellant, the appellant to come up. Don, do you want to come up? And Joe will set up his mic. And then we'll have the applicant come up afterwards. Thanks, Don.
Greetings, city council, staff, people watching at home. My name is Don Beatty. I live in Morro Bay, and I'm the appellant. I also will be speaking as the appellant, but because my speech is not always that easy to understand, Steve Stevens will follow up after my very brief comments here. I'm really confused, most especially why staff is recommending denial of this appeal. As was suggested at the last council meeting on the subject, the cloisters ARC met with the applicant. The meeting went well, and all parties agreed that a new design be created to incorporate cloisters homeowner concerns, most much around parking. Notes from this meeting were shared with staff. Just to make sure we're all on the same page, the meeting the ARC had with the applicant discussed a new project design. If the ARC and the applicant are happy with that direction, why would staff be recommending denial of our approvals, excuse me, denial of our appeal? This equates to going back to a design we all agree is being superseded. In my opinion, we need to get together again to see the results from our meeting, and if warranted, give it our stamp of approval. Then, per procedure, which I'm now understanding is different than the procedure I knew of, send it back to the planning commission, i.e. uphold my appeal. Denial of this appeal leaves us no other option than to appeal to the coastal commission. Steve will take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. First of all, I just wanted to note that at the last discussion that we had here, Marla showed everybody on the city council that within the restrictive covenant, it does specifically state that both the City of Morro Bay and the cloisters design committee must approve all submittal proposed. So, that would be "and" the cloisters design committee. So, we are part of that planning process, and even site improvements that do not require a permit from the city will still be reviewed and approved by the committee. Now, just echoing what Don had said, we greatly actually appreciate the spirited discussion that we had, and it was a discussion of cooperation with the applicant, and they promised to present to the design committee a newly revised plan, taking into account the myriad objections and the issues which needed to be addressed prior to submitting a new design to the ARC for evaluation, review, and comments. The cloisters ARC strongly objects to the staff report recommendation. Instead, the cloisters ARC seeks to build upon the goodwill and the meeting of the minds established in the initial meeting with the applicant and to receive the agreed-upon revised submittal. We had our meeting five weeks ago, and we've been waiting to set up another formal second meeting to continue this progress that has been generated at the first meeting. Mid-afternoon today was an email received pertaining to something that we had not seen previously. A subsequent meeting per the design guideline is warranted, so we can advance that discussion. And it's an oversight, I think, that literally just hours before this meeting, a flurry of activity took place, including hearing about changes required by the coastal commission. We have not had any type of communication in that regard given to us in terms of what is the effect of what the coastal commission now is requiring, which alters, by the way, what, at least my understanding, the original planning commission approved. So, there's a deviation here, and it needs to be taken into an account. Furthermore, the city council has a duty of honoring the integrity of the process and respecting a proper order and allowing the cloisters design committee to fulfill its role per the coastal commission to find compatibility within the design guidelines prior to approving all submittals proposed. And we worked hard in full cooperation with the applicant. And again, the cloisters ARC appreciates all the goodwill established with the applicant and looks forward to properly evaluating the newly revised submittal and continuing to respond to the applicant and make sure that all the issues and considerations specific to compatibility within the design guidelines mitigate the concerns expressed by the parcel owners of the cloisters. The majority of the city council, I wish, would embrace the desire to seek a approved, revised submittal and honor the process and not denigrate its own integrity with the unfortunate staff recommendation, which only creates further delays, distrust, and hostility. Instead, we favor communication toward a solution, allowing proper review, and ultimately an acceptable revised submittal, allowing the cloisters design committee approval of the best project possible for Lot 124 by the applicant. I'd like to express my gratitude in advance for you giving us the ARC and the applicant an opportunity to continue this discussion in good faith. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We can invite the applicant up at this time?
Thank you, Mayor Irons, members of the council. My name is Kevin Huber with Morro Bay Ventures. And first of all, I'd like to thank the staff for their continued efforts on this project. There's been a lot of work going on, both at the city and with the coastal commission staff, so thank you. As the staff pointed out, we've complied with every recommendation that's been asked of us. We exceeded the legally required notice requirement. We agreed to expand the raptor habitat mitigation that was requested at the planning commission despite the fact that the report indicated that there was no significant raptor or not suitable for raptors. One of the things when we met with the design review committee is they had a lot of questions about the raptor habitat. We followed up. We provided them with all of their reports. Our consultant, Dave Watson, forwarded those on to them. There were no further questions from them about raptor habitat. There were then some discussion about, at the last hearing, about the design review process. And so, we followed a process, I think, as staff pointed out, that has been in practice for over a decade. There was a supplemental resolution or supplemental recorded document to the CCNRs for the cloisters that actually named Craig Smith as the attorney, in fact, power of attorney for the cloisters design review committee, and gave him sole power to appoint all of the committee members. Okay? And so, in addition to that, then he acted on behalf of the committee for over a decade. There's an email from Mr. Stevens to Craig Smith whereby Mr. Smith first asks him, you know, we've got this house, how do you want us to process it? And Mr. Stevens says to him, just as the last board has indicated, we think that you should, we will defer to your decision on how to process these things. So, we relied upon Mr. Smith's representation of the committee and processed our plans accordingly and received preliminary review of our plans. Now, keep in mind, this is a preliminary site review. This is not, we're not saying that we have final site plan review for these houses yet. We recognize we have to go back to the homeowners association design review committee at the time we look for a final review. Our project is consistent with all Morro Bay code requirements. As was stated at this council's request, we met with the appellant and members of the design review committee and other residents and discussed the concerns. So, in addition to the raptor habitat, the issue of whether we were going to be included in the HOA came up. That's clear in the CCNRs that this property, if it were developed, is in the homeowners association. The question about the landscape lighting maintenance assessment district came up. There was confusion on that initially because the CCNRs by definition say that this lot is included in the defined district, so we thought it was already in the district. But the resolution creating the district back in 1996 or something, I think it was, excludes the lot. So, we would have to annex to the district. We checked with legal counsel, and I think it's been confirmed by the city's legal counsel that that annexation process, as long as we don't increase the total assessment in the district, does not violate any Prop 218 requirements that were set forth in the California Constitution. And furthermore, it's a condition of the approval that the planning commission is recommending that we are part of that district. As an accommodation to the appellant, we prepared a revised site plan, not only adding additional guest parking, it wasn't shown on this plan, but they had a question about the pedestrian traffic on a private driveway coming off of Coral into the houses, and how would they know where to walk, and was there a safety issue there? So, we had asphalt originally in that, we had a concrete apron and then asphalt on the driveway. I don't know if the plans, if you can bring it up. But what we agreed, both from an aesthetic standpoint and from a delineation standpoint for walking, was that we would replace the section there that's asphalt with pavers, interlocking pavers, and we would use a design and color in those, in that paved section or paver section that would show where pedestrian traffic should walk as they come into that subdivision. With regard to the parking, so the plan that Nancy put up here shows 10 additional guest parking spaces, which are not required. We added, we originally had eight, we added two, and then we actually had the architect lay out another plan that had two more on the front two lots, between the front two lots and the middle two lots, and it became a sea of parking. Okay? And we just don't think that's aesthetically pleasing. We don't think it's proper for the neighborhood, and it's certainly not proper for what we're trying to accomplish here. And what's not shown on here is we have the right to park five or six cars on Coral if there were a party, something like that, which is the same that every cloisters owner has. They can, if they have a party, people park on the street because they're not going to put everybody in their driveway or their neighbor's driveway. So, we've not only complied with every requirement in this process, but we've accommodated their requests that came up at the ARC, at the design review committee in the spirit of being a good neighbor. When this lot was dedicated to the city, the offer of dedication contemplated that the city may not use it for a fire station, and if so, it could only be used for residential. It has to be a part of the CCNRs, which we've agreed to. So, we're consistent with the city requirements. We're consistent with the cloisters requirements. We don't believe that the ARC or design review committee supersedes any approval by the city or by the coastal commission. And I would point out, you know, I think this is a bit of a delay tactic on Mr. Stevens' part, and one of the frustrating things from our perspective is Mr. Stevens was on the design review committee when this subdivision came before the city in 2007 as a city-proposed subdivision. There was no word from the design review committee at that time for substantially the same subdivision. When Mr. Stevens was marketing the property, he was marketing a six-lot subdivision to try to sell it on behalf of the city. There was no design review committee or concern at that time in 2013. And now, all of a sudden, there's a grave concern about exactly the same subdivision that we're proposing. So, with regard to this coastal commission, the new requirement being unknown to them, my discussions with coastal commission staff indicated that Carrigan Mayen had been in constant contact with Sarah Carville at the coastal commission, and he was well aware of the change that was coming down the pipe. So, we believe this is an excellent addition to the cloisters. We believe it's an excellent addition to the City of Morro Bay and would respectfully request that you deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission approval. And our planning consultant, Dave Watson, is here as well as my son and myself, if you have any further questions.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that. We'll go into questions from council, then we'll go into public comment, and if there's any further questions needed from the applicants, then we'll ask the applicants at that time. And then we'll open up for public comment, and then close public comment, and bring it back to council. then close public comment, and bring it back to council for discussion. Marloes, you want to start us off for questions?
Thank you, yes. Let me start with the issue of the Coastal Commission, since that just came up, and I would like to fully understand exactly how that letter and what their decision, how that impacts the project.
So the Coastal Commission, a little over a week ago, made contact with us, the applicant and the appellant, and let us know that they were going to take back coastal development permit authority on the project. When the project started off a couple of years ago, we vetted this through the Coastal Commission. Yair Chaver was our local contact and the analyst there. And we asked the question back then as well. The subdivision, the Cloister subdivision, was approved by the city but then went to the Coastal Commission on appeal, so the coastal development permit for the subdivision was issued by the Coastal Commission and not the city of Morro Bay. And so we asked the question at the time, so do you want us to process a separate new coastal development permit for the six-lot subdivision, or do you want to amend the existing coastal development permit on the project? And if you want to do that, then Coastal Commission, you'll be issuing that permit, and the city will issue a conditional use permit and tentative parcel, tentative subdivision map. At the time, it took them about four months to respond to us, and they then contacted us and said, no, you go ahead and process the C D P. It's still in our appeal authority. If we have issues or want to, you know, do anything with it, we have that ability, so go ahead. And so that's what we did. That's what we've been doing for the last, you know, year and a half, basically. And once the appeal happened, they were looking at it because the appellant's were making contact with Coastal. Coastal ran it up the flagpole in their organization again, and they changed their decision. Hence, the letter that you received today, both stating that fact and apologizing to the city for giving us the wrong direction to begin with. So all that does is take the coastal development permit out. Our conditional use permit and the tentative subdivision map remain in effect. That would be still under the appeal that's sitting before you this evening, and that's what we would move forward with tonight.
So does that mean that the applicant now has to apply for a coastal development permit?
They have to apply for a coastal development permit. The Coastal Commission is going to process it as an immaterial amendment, and I believe they have it scheduled tentatively for their December meeting.
So they would do it in somewhat of a hurry?
Correct.
Because they understand this situation?
Yes.
So tell me exactly what we would be approving tonight, and you referred to it as a preliminary site plan, so if you could explain what would happen, since there is obviously still some discussion going on about design features that haven't been resolved, how would those get resolved in the future?
So the approval process includes, recognizes that changes can happen to projects over time, and we have the ability to approve minor changes at staff level, and more significant ones would have to go back to the Planning Commission for approval. I don't know short of them talking about some, adding a couple of parking spaces, which would probably be considered minor, in my view, in process to staff level. I don't know if there are any other changes they're proposing, because we, again, we haven't, from a staff standpoint, been involved in the process with them.
So we could ask both the applicant and both parties what changes they are contemplating or what they have agreed to, because it sounds like they had an amicable meeting and agreed on some changes. I just want to know that those changes can be accommodated moving forward?
Yeah, in the future, they are required to obtain separate approvals for the individual homes, and so those additional parking spaces, if that's the only change, could come forward as part of that process. If there are other changes related to the configuration of the lots or something like that, then that would require, it would have to go back to Planning Commission if we affected the map. But that's not been what's been indicated to us.
It would not affect our decision?
No, the appellant, in the beginning, I mean, the appeal is in front of you, doesn't raise any substantial issue related to compliance with the city's land use documents, meaning its general plan, local coastal program, although that's now with the Coastal Commission or the zoning code. So, yeah, I mean, our position remains the same, that their recommendation is to deny the appeal because they've raised no issue as it relates to compliance with those documents. And it doesn't take any authority away from the A R C. The A R C still gets to weigh in on the final homes as they come forward. That's a separate process they're going to have to come through, and so they would have the, you know, authority that they normally have as it relates to single-family homes and that subdivision.
But we, could we add a condition tonight if we chose to?
We could make that happen, yes.
Okay. I mean, just ensuring that they continue to collaborate and work toward an amicable solution?
Well, and their C C N Rs and their architectural review documents require them to do that anyway.
Okay.
So they're being part of the, you know, they'll have to be, they'll be part of their C C N Rs. They don't have a homeowners association. Their C C N Rs is what binds them, and then they have the assessment district.
And have any other residents of the Cloisters voiced any concerns or come forward to make comments?
No.
So just the Architectural Design Committee?
Correct.
Okay. So you have added, they have added some parking spaces. Is that correct?
They're proposing some parking spaces. It's not required by the city zoning code.
But they have proposed that?
Yes. And I also just wanted to bring up a clarification. The Cloisters A R C, the bulk of their review is at building permit submittal, and that's really where the city recognizes that they want to see evidence that it has gone through that process before they issue a permit.
Okay.
I think the difference is this is schematic. This is planning, and it's nice to have a schematic approval letter, which we thought we had, but it's not necessary for the city to make approval of a tentative map and a conditional use permit.
Okay. So how would we, the council, ensure that they continue working together? I mean, would it have to be some kind of a condition if we?
No, I mean, they're required to work together by the documents that are formed for that subdivision. That binds them to work through that process, and they have future discretionary permits that they'll be submitting to us, and so those can also be appealed through a process. So it's not over. What we effectively are approving, were you to follow staff's recommendation, would be the conditional use permit and the tentative map.
Tentative.
Counselor McPherson, may I just add some clarification to what I'm hearing in the discussion? It would be appropriate for the council to, if they wanted to, to add a condition that said they have to meet the requirements of their C C N Rs, but I would not suggest that you add a condition that says they have to get approval from any outside body, because that's, you can't give your authority to someone else.
Right. No, I understand that. All right. Thank you. That's...
Thanks, Marloes. Matt, excuse me, John? This Matt's over here. John's here.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, both parties, for coming up and explaining where you are in the process. Just to follow up, a couple of questions, and thank you, staff, for, again, your presentation. The appellant, one of the representatives made a statement that the city has a duty of honoring its process, the A R C. Has the city done that?
Well, as we've stated, we thought we did that when we got the original approval letter from Craig Smith. As it turns out, there was a little bit of a lack of clarity on the A R C's part about what they were giving us and what we got, and whether they agreed with it or not. And I think that's the reason why the council continued this item at the last meeting, was to give them the opportunity to talk again, because it seemed like that didn't happen as part of the normal course of business, or at least they didn't like the manner in which it happened. They've now met, you know, as was anticipated by the continuance that the council gave them, so I assume that that's all being taken care of. Yes. Beyond that, you know, we have the city's approval process that we're in right now, and that's what the appeal is based on, not their A R C process.
Okay, thank you. I heard the, and I don't know who to ask, but I heard the applicant state that they've complied with all staff and Planning Commission recommendations, that the raptor issue has been resolved in discussion with the appellant, that they followed a process that was in place for over a decade, and that Mr. Smith had sole power and has acted substantially the same way for the past 10 years, and that the project has met all Morro Bay code requirements, that the H O A, they're included in the H O A, which was an issue that was raised, that the lighting district issue has been taken care of, that they will be included in the lighting district. With regard to accommodation, there's additional site plan that mitigates some of the walking concerns with pavement changes, that they've accommodated requests of the A R C with regard to part of the C C N Rs, and that they, the applicant believes that the parking issue has been resolved with the addition, and my note, my note says that the additional ability to park five or six cars on Coral, and through alternate designs or showing other visualizations that they've met the intent of this. Yet, on the part of the appellant, I hear that these issues are not necessarily are resolved specifically with regard to what I wrote down from the appellant as a desire to seek a group revised submittal. And so I guess my question maybe to Mr. Stevens would be, what do you mean by the desire to seek a group revised submittal? That would help me misunderstand.
Come on up, Steve, thanks.
So what culminated at the end of the last meeting was that the applicant was to submit to the group a revised submittal, a revised plan for the Design Committee to consider and to continue communicating then. That was what I was referring to in terms of a revised submittal. We were anticipating this process continuing and having an additional meeting prior to this meeting right now that we're having in front of the city.
Steve, a revised plan specifically addressing parking issues or?
The overriding concern had to do with parking, because, and by the way, there were, we were not the only ones. Not only did I go around the Cloisters, in terms of getting comments from people, Howard Needham, I know, sent in a letter to the, to voice his objection. So there was also written correspondence that you received. But specifically had to do with parking concerns. I think that's our biggest overriding concerns, because it impacts not only the Cloisters but everybody else in the neighborhood there. So we were looking for compatibility more than anything. That's what our concern. We really appreciate the goodwill expressed and reflected by the applicant in terms of the pavers and in terms of the pedestrian. So that just, it just reflects the progress that was being made through this communication, and that's what we were hoping to follow up then with additional communication.
Could you just help me understand what compatibility in your mind would look like to the A R C with regard to parking?
Well, what we discussed...
Neighborhood compatibility.
Yeah, what we discussed with the applicant is that each of the, each of the 120 parcel owners within the Cloisters right now has an availability of two parking spaces besides their garage spot, and that's within their driveway. Because, and so because of that, we were looking for certainly compatibility by the applicant, and there were suggestions made that they were going to, in terms of the R R M representative, make a good faith effort in that regard, not only for the two, but for the six...
On Coral?
Parcels. Not, no, not on Coral.
Oh, I'm sorry. The six parcels.
Yeah, I'm talking about in terms of the driveway, in the same way that each of the parcels within the Cloisters has two parking spaces. So we were looking for compatibility relative to parking, and so that there wouldn't be impacting of the neighborhood, because we're primarily concerned in terms of, you know, what is the effect of not just a party, but six additional homes and the number of cars that could be parked. And so we're looking in terms of the driveway being the accommodation, as is with the rest of the Cloisters.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
That helps a lot. I appreciate it. For staff, is the existing plan that's been approved by Planning Commission allow for the parking of two individual cars in each driveway, just to refresh my memory?
No.
And if not, what's the alternative plan for parking that might allow for, what, there are four or five additional spaces that are outside of the?
Yes. I mean, the applicant has shown two different versions, one with 10 spaces outside of the garage, one with 12 spaces outside of the garage. But again, the zoning code doesn't require any, and I wanted to read a section from the Cloisters Design Guidelines. It says, "All guidelines shall be in compliance with all applicable laws and regulations of any governmental entity having jurisdiction over the improvements in the project."
Okay, great.
No, it's on this slide. Eight. So this is the original approval?
There, yeah, okay.
Twelve in the garages, eight outside of the garages.
Twelve automobiles parked?
In the enclosed individual garages and eight spaces outside of the garage.
So compatibility would be, from what I heard from Mr. Stevens, for the houses that are in the Cloisters, two automobiles be able to park in the driveway. So if you have six houses, that's 12 automobiles being able to park in the driveway. That accommodates that?
No.
It doesn't, but the additional spaces would accommodate it?
They did another plan that had two additional outside-of-the-garage spaces. It just, it starts to look like a sea of parking.
Got you. Thank you. No further questions. Matt?
Nancy, your sea of cars comment, is that also possible in the remainder parts that's permitted under the zoning regulations, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
What I mean is, in the rest, in the remaining Cloisters area, people can park in the garage and in their driveway?
They can, yes.
So in effect, they could have four vehicles on each lot?
They could.
Okay. So in terms of the sea of...
I mean, I haven't examined every single driveway design.
But in terms of, my point is, in terms of the sea of cars, looking at this picture here, you could, in worst-case scenario, have a sea of cars in Cloisters, if not Morro Bay large. Okay? Now, also, your comment earlier was in terms of the reviews. Right now, in terms of this preliminary, was it C O L, C D?
No, it's the, so the approvals include a, initially by the Planning Commission, included a coastal development permit, conditional use permit, and tentative track map approval. We've now jettisoned the C D P, and it's back at Coastal. So now we have the conditional use permit and tentative track map.
Okay. So in effect, by this stage right now, it's going to go to Coastal and come back at what stage, and what will they, other reviews would we have at that point?
It depends on whether there's changes made to the design. I mean, I can't speak to that. They talked about an immaterial amendment, so they looked at the plans and not found any issues with them. Otherwise, they wouldn't be doing an immaterial amendment. They'd be going for a full review, which they're not. And so I don't expect to get any changes back, but I can't guarantee that until the Coastal Commission itself reviews the project.
Sure. The coloration that they proposed to do on the entrance to the driveway from Coral, is that consistent or anywhere else in the Cloisters?
I don't believe so, and I haven't checked with the fire department to make sure that they're okay with pavers on the driveway.
Okay. Okay, that's all my questions. Red?
Has the applicant complied with every city requirement for issuance of a permit at this point?
I would say yes, with the conditions of approval.
Yes. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Red. So getting back to the parking and Mr. Davis's question and your answer. So initially, everything has been met with the previous slide with eight parking spaces. Go back to the other one there, please. So that's the one that was approved by Planning Commission, correct?
Yes.
And so with the previous question from Mr. Davis, they've met everything, all the city requirement... the city requirements, the applicant met all the city requirements, including any CCNRs. The example, what I wrote down was each parcel owner has two sparking, parking spaces available within their driveway. Is that a requirement within?
No.
The closters?
No.
There's no requirement for that? Okay, and so, this had meets all the CCNRs within the cloisters and all the city requirements? This, this plan, the original plan?
It meets all city standards.
It meets all city standards?
I'm not going to speak to whether it's 100% compliant with the CCNRs because somebody could argue that a portion of it is not in some fashion.
I don't understand that because I mean, I would think if there are CCNRs that say, hey, this is the way it should be, then that should meet it.
To our knowledge, it's compliant. But the CCNRs are not something the city enforces.
Nor do we, nor do we want to.
Yeah, exactly. We require them to have them.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, I'm sorry, so let me back up. The CCNRs are regulations on whether or not you can park off, off the street or you're required to park in your garage, you can't have any cars parked out on the street. That's within the CCNRs. That doesn't depict whether or not each resident is supposed to have two parking spaces in their driveway. The CCNRs and the plans are different.
Correct, yes, yeah, there's, we didn't, I didn't see any requirement for that.
I didn't necessarily want to mix those up, but I did inadvertently, sorry. I don't have any further questions. I'll open it for public comment. Is there anybody for public comment?
Good evening, city council staff. I, I am just in off the road of four hours, so bear with me. I was called and told.
Karrigan Mayhem?
Karrigan Mayhem, that, sorry.
Thank you, thanks, Karrigan.
Told on the phone that I was apparently aware and in touch with Coastal Commission and knew that this was coming down the pike, so that is all absolutely not true. I knew nothing whatsoever of the letter from Coastal Commission today and I've not been in touch with Sarah or spoken to Sarah for over a month. I'll start there. Now, respectful to the project, here's the problem and I stated it the last time I spoke over a month ago. And I wrote this letter that I'm going to read to you, it's short, to Kevin, to Dave, excuse me. After we all got together and we discussed the parking situation and the problems that existed, it was agreed to that they would try to create two more spots. After they left, we all discussed it further and realized that that was not going to work from the standpoint that it was not consistent with the compatibility and the consistency of the cloisters. There is not a house in the cloisters that two cars cannot park in the driveway. They have four houses, right now, they're talking about a parking cluster, that's not true. Four houses cannot park in their driveways. It's nothing to do with guest parking, nothing. So, I wrote to Dave, "On behalf of the ARC, thought we had a good sit-down meeting as you made mention, further discussion only helps make the project better. While the other issues discussed still need further clarification, we believe the parking situation seemed to be a most prominent factor on our joint punch list. In the meeting, I tried to approach the elephant in the room, parking as directly, succinctly, and as straightforward as I possibly could. I got the impression that you and RRM architect Scott Martin had a solid sense and grasp of the problem and seemed actively focused for a resolve and moving forward. We all greatly appreciated that. We look forward to seeing the parking issue redesigned and resolved, eliminating excess residential or guest spillover parking on Coral and the already compromised San Jacinto." With that, given the limited street parking for a six-house subdivision within a subdivision, we still have some reservations. The added space to create a tandem parking, which you did see, by the way, in what they put up here, I don't know why they didn't take the time to do the rest of what we spoke of, but that's okay. The added space to create a tandem parking within the guest parking is a welcome addition along with the redesigning of the driveways on lots two and five per hour discussion."
Karrigan, the three-minute buzzer?
Well, can I finish, I mean, okay, we're talking about getting parking in?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Really?
Yes, your three-minute, that three-minute buzzer?
I'm aware of the three-minute buzzer, but this is pretty important.
Thank you.
Anyway, it's not compatible, it's not consistent with the cloisters, period.
Thanks, Karrigan. And I don't have any more speaker slips for this item, so I'll close public comment for this item. I've got your, Steve and Dawn, I know you submitted those, but you guys spoke as the appellant, so I've got those. And with that, we'll bring back to council for deliberation. Red, do you want to start us off?
I guess my position is that if the applicant complies with all the requirements that the city requires, then the city is obligated to issue the permit.
Okay, thanks. Matt?
In terms of looking at the various claims that have came up, come up and looking through how they've been processed and dealt with and answered, including, as Karrigan, you pointed out, parking. Before you got here, I thought they did a decent job of explaining and showing how they were going to be laid out, explaining the combination between Coral and how the various parking will work for the additional houses. I do believe the concerns have been met, looking at the one through eight, I really think they have. And then also, in terms of the timing that Nancy and Scott both pointed out, this isn't a done deal. Right now, in terms of, as Reds point out, in terms of looking at what we as a city can look at in terms of our rules, and if we do have the wherewithal right now to say, you know, no, being that it's been appealed to us. But however, I do believe the, the concerns have been met and knowing that this will go on to another step, I'm also at ease with it.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, everybody, for your comments and information. I went down a litany of, a list of things that were raised by the appellant and have been addressed by the applicant, satisfying literally everything that was of concern. The Planning Commission has weighed in on this with regard to the city and its guidelines were within all of the requirements of the city. For me, it comes down to the statement that has been made, the issue of concern is parking and quote-unquote neighborhood compatibility with regard to parking. There's nothing in the CCR guidelines, from what I understand, that, that specifies that. There's nothing in the city guidelines or ordinances or regulations that specify what that is. It comes down to an interpretation of what that may well be. And the real concern is spillover onto Coral Avenue and or San Jacinto, and I get that, especially onto San Jacinto. It's apparent that from our authority, my authority as a city council person, all of the applicant's issues that have been raised, excuse me, the appellant's issues that have been raised have been met with the exception of parking. And however, I don't feel that, that should qualify right now for denial and I would support staff recommendation.
Thanks, Marla.
I too support staff recommendation. I think at the last public hearing, we were concerned about the way that the Architectural Review Committee had not had an opportunity to actually look at the project. They've had that opportunity and I sense that they're, the applicant wants goodwill. After all, he's building houses there and is willing to listen and is willing to compromise and look for a solution. And since this is just a preliminary site plan and there's many steps moving forward where there'll be an opportunity to again make comments or perhaps weigh in, I think we really owe it to the applicant since he has complied with all of our rules and regulations to support him, so I would deny the appeal.
Thanks. I just have one question before we go on. The original plan was eight parking spaces, then per the discussion, we're going to 12. Which one is the approving one tonight?
It's the original one that had the eight.
Eight.
So, but as the individual lots come forward, those have to be reviewed under a separate permit. And so, the lot configuration as it relates to what that looks like can change and that has to get worked out. They have to get approval for those individual lot layouts and the designs of those homes and the color choices and those types of things from the ARC, so, yeah. So, that, this is, I think as Commissioner McPherson indicated, this is sort of, you know, step one in the process, there's a, there's a few more that will take place.
Yep, thanks. I just wanted, for clarification, understand that and, and I would, I'm in support of staff recommendation to approve this based on everybody's comments. I would echo all those, they've met all the requirements. I would just add the additional comment in that adding the additional parking spaces would probably, this is just my, my view detract from the project overall. If you, you add all open space for parking, it's, in the end, will not make for a good project. That's only my personal touch on that, but I, I think it, it does meet everything that we've, you know, that's within the city guidelines. It's not the first time this has come to the city. It's, it's gone through this once before and was approved, a six-lock subdivision back in what year?
Seven.
2007. We're just going through it one more time and I would, I would move to approve this. With that, are there any specific recommendation or comments that we need to make per the motion? Council adopted resolution 8718?
That's it?
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, I would take a motion as such.
Prove that we adopt resolution 8718, making the necessary findings to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission approval of conditional use permit UPO-470, tentative vesting map number 2859, S00-127, and mitigated negative declaration for the site at 2783 Coral Avenue to allow a six partial subdivision on a .99 acre site within the cloister subdivision project.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heding, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Thanks for coming out. And with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda is item C2 and this is our One Water Plan. We'll make little adjustments on the seating arrangements. Thanks for coming out, Karen. Who's introducing this one?
I'll give it a shot.
All right, good, thanks, Rob.
This is requesting approval of our one dihydrogen monoxide, I'm sorry, One Water Plan that sets up capital improvement programs for our water and wastewater utilities along with a review of potential future water resource options. With that, we have Eric Casares from Corolo Engineers who will give us a brief presentation of where we are and open it up for questions and ultimate approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Mayor Irons, members of council, staff, Eric Casares with Corolo Engineers. Excuse me, as Rob mentioned, we're up here today to discuss the adoption of the One Water Morro Bay Plan. We've been in front of you several times on this project and we're now kind of coming to the end in the final step here. I just have a couple of slides I want to walk through, kind of the, the process that we've gone through in bringing things to both PWAAB and council over the course of this project. This is a slide we always go back to, which is, again, why has the city decided to, to undertake this One Water Plan? What does this One Water concept mean? The city identified the need to do individual infrastructure master plans for their water, wastewater collection and stormwater systems and also take a hard look at their existing water supply portfolio. And in doing that, made the decision to do that holistically in what's kind of known as the One Water Concept. A number of communities are adopting this to look at their, their water resources. And again, a number of communities have, have undertaken this and Morro Bay is, is one in a long line that will, in the future, look at their water resources in this way. The objectives of One Water Morro Bay were really to identify the necessary capital improvements to those three systems that I talked about, the water distribution, the wastewater collection and the stormwater systems. But with the, the added benefit of also looking at the water supply side of things, not just the, the pipes and the pump stations and the tanks that are out there in the system, but also the water resource aspect and where the city's water comes from and strengthening that water supply. There's a component that informs the general plan and local coastal plan and one of the other benefits was informing the rate process the city underwent this, this past summer in conjunction with the, the water reclamation facility project. And we'll talk a little bit about how that weaved into this whole process here in a second. We're asking that council take the following action tonight. One is to approve the One Water Morro Bay Plan, provide direction to staff to really engrain these capital improvement plans that have been developed for the water sewer and storm system into the, the city's annual, annual budget, budget process. And then third, to use the recommendations from the water supply evaluation component of the, of, of the plan in looking at how the city goes after and handles their water resource portfolio in the future. Just wanted to go through a brief kind of implementation timeline. And so, we started this project back in late May of 2017, really got done with the majority of it in approximately a year, kind of at the end of the summer. We've been going through and refining and completing the actual report itself over the last couple of months. We first brought information to the PWAAB and the city council back in, in late, late to 2017, early 2018. And we went and we brought everything first to PWAAB as we went through this process and then followed up with a very similar presentation and of information to the city council. So, this first meeting, those, that happened back in PWAAB in November and then with the city council in January, really focused on an overview of what we were doing in One Water Morro Bay Plan and to dig into a little bit of the components that, that you all would see when you started reviewing some of the draft information that was coming out. We went through the, the individual components of really the four pieces of the One Water Morro Bay Plan. And then we talked about the status and how we were going about developing those four individual components of the plan. So, that was really the first meeting. We had a couple of follow-up meetings, one with PWAAB on May 16th and then with city council on May 22nd. Here, the focus was quite a bit different because of what we were doing with the WRF program and the rate study. We kind of changed the way that we would typically do one of these plans and we fast-tracked the water and collection system CIP components because we knew that the, these formed a part of the bigger picture when we looked at the, the necessary surcharges to fund the WRF program and additional capital improvements on, on those sides of the house. So, in May, we brought a couple of capital improvement plans to U4 review. These were originally developed and then modified with a direction from the Blue Urban Commission that was appointed by the city manager in, in the spring of that, of that year. So, those were the meetings in May. We then came back to you in June, late June of, of this year and really focused a lot on the water supply evaluation component. Again, this was a critical component that related to the WRF program where we looked at different water supply options, including ocean water desal, use of the city's existing groundwater resources and, and ultimately, the recommendation was made to move forward with a indirect potable reuse project similar to what the city was undertaking with the WRF, with the WRF project. So, helping strengthen, help strengthening that decision, that decision-making process. help strengthening that decision, that decision-making process. We looked at a number of different economic and non-economic evaluation criteria, as you guys recall. We then had a follow-up round of PWAAB and city council meetings in late September, early October. And really, this is where we came to you with, with pretty much the full picture in reviewing the CIPs for not only the water and sewer that we had fast-tracked, but also going through the deficiencies we'd identified in the stormwater system, the projects to, to mitigate some of those issues, and the capital, the capital, the costs for doing those projects as well. So bringing and rounding out the, the third CIP of, of the three. We also, again, went over the water supply alternatives evaluation and the results of that evaluation, and really solidified a lot of our recommendations in that meeting. Which brings us to tonight, which we're bringing you, essentially, you've received the, the final One Water Plan. The draft that was delivered in, in September, we made some minor modifications to that draft since it was delivered to, to PWAAB and to council. Really, one of the big changes was we added an executive summary, something that we were always going to do. We usually wait until the end when we deliver a final document to, to develop that executive summary. So that was one of the bigger changes. We incorporated a number of minor comments that were received from city council and PWAAB as a result of your review of, of those documents. And then we, it took quite a bit of effort to compile those documents and go through them, and print all the pages and the appendices and everything else. With that, I can take any questions that you might have. That's the presentation.
All right. Pardon me.
It's okay.
All right. Questions? Marlese, you want to start us off?
If you could first, and thank you very much. This is an impressive document.
Thanks.
It's a great paperweight, by the way. But I, we've read it, and I did focus on the executive summary, since we had read the other pieces in, in various forms. If you could begin by maybe addressing Meredith Bates' questions about the desal plant, because I had a question about the desal plant also. And I think, and this is again in the executive summary, it was a little unclear. You talked about decommissioning the desal plant, but if I'm correct in reading it, you would leave the wells as is so as not to jeopardize a permit.
Sure.
Is that correct? But I know that Meredith had some additional questions.
Yeah, I can address Ms. Bates' comments first. Essentially, the, the city's facility that's out there on Atascadero Road, that building, really houses two separate facilities. So there's a metal shell with two treatment plants inside of it. One is the ocean water desal facility, takes ocean water from the, the seawater wells, and, and that's the facility that the city could use during an emergency-type scenario to provide drinking water to the city. On the other side, you have the brackish water RO facility that gets exercised on more than an annual basis. It's being used right now. State Water is out until later this month. I want to be clear, and, and it, and we do, we try to do our best to make this clear in the document. We're really close to it, and we're staff's really close to it. So we kind of take some of these things for granted sometimes, that they are as clear as we might think they are. But the recommendation is to not do anything to the brackish water RO side. Now, as you remember, we've talked a lot as part of the WRF and as this project, that we're hoping with the injection of the purified water from the future potable reuse facility, we won't have to use that brackish water RO facility to treat water that's coming out of the Moro Well Field. So we're not recommending to do anything to that side. The other side is the ocean water desal side, and there's an appendix in, in the final One Water Plan. I believe it's appendix G, which is an assessment of that ocean water desal facility by Corolo's desal expert. And in that memo, he describes the condition of that existing ocean water desal facility, and really, it's not operable right now. So just want to make sure that those two things are, are clear. So the city, in talking with the state recently, they made the comment about doing something to de-energize the seawater wells that are used only on the ocean water desal side, but not necessarily pulling those wells, but leaving them kind of in service or mothballed where they are. The reason for that being that it would allow the city to kind of keep their existing ocean desal permit active. The reason being that if, for some reason in the future, the city wanted to pursue some type of desal project, they have a permit to do that. Getting another permit to do that sometime in the future would be, could be very, fairly difficult. So that was kind of the recommendation, was mothball the, the wells out there, and just be able to keep your permit kind of sitting in a dormant state, that if you need to use it in the future, you might be able to.
And the bottom line for that is costs. So we would save testing costs by having those wells mothballed and not active wells. So we get out of a, a bunch of annual testing for wells that were likely never to use.
But might. I know at one point you had talked about possibly moving the desal plant. So that's, I suppose, still an option if, if circumstances changed in some drastic way.
In fact, it's part of our coastal permit for that facility is to look at relocating it at the end of its useful life to a point that it's not within the coastal hazard area.
So just a quick, I'll just add quickly to that. So when we sat down and put together the list of what ultimately became more than a dozen different options and iterations of water supply for the city, one of them that we obviously quickly looked at was the ocean desal facility. We did the evaluation, and we determined from that evaluation that that facility, as it currently exists, could not really be used with, without a whole, pretty much a wholesale replacement of all the critical components in terms of the reverse osmosis membranes, the high-pressure pumps, and a number of those different things. So the decision was made is early in that analysis, and it's, and it's discussed in chapter seven of the report, that if the city wanted to do ocean water desalination to produce 650 acre-feet of water a year, they would need to build a new ocean water desal facility. And that new desal facility would need to be relocated out of the area where it's currently located. So...
Okay. And then my second and my last question. You suggested here that we use the recommendations for water supply options as guidance, and I'm assuming that we're essentially then approving that section as giving you the go-ahead to move forward and use those recommendations. I wanted to ask you about the other recommendations in the report. Would those come back to council on a regular basis? There, there are a number of other recommendations in the report, the desal one being one. So I'm just wondering how that's going to be handled, in, when we approve this report?
I'll, I'll let, I'll let Rob speak to that. I can go through some of the, some of the recommendations, but, Rob, you want to speak to the specifics of how that would be handled?
Sure. The recommendations regarding the CIPs will come back to the council every budget to be incorporated into that year's annual budget. The recommendations on, for example, whether we go with desal, I think depends a lot on state water. What, things are currently happening with state water right now with the California Water Fix and changing the rules on which agencies can trade or sell water. And those will take place over the next few years, how that changed. So we'll, we'll keep abreast of those and update council as we probably, you know, kind of a state of the water report on a, on a regular basis. I'm not sure if it needs to be annual or a semi-annual report. Depends how fast these changes take place. So currently, right now, our state water provides us with a allocation of 1,313 acre-feet a year, which, if we get our full allocation, provides enough water to supply the city. What it doesn't do is anticipate any downtime with the state water, which we know happens at least once a year. And so we need other water supply to help us get through there. In addition, in build-out, 1,313 acre-feet is not enough. So we will need to address that future water supply. The way we're proposed to address that is with IPR, indirect potable reuse, and water reclamation.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that in, in approving the plan, I wanted to know exactly what we are approving and what will be coming back to us as separate decision points. That's my...
I just want to say simply, nothing gets done without it being included in the budget. So it has to come back to council in some form, either in the annual budget or some budget amendment, so that we know that we're authorized to make those expenditures.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would just, I would just say, one of the, I think, one of the benefits of, of the plan was the, you know, the, the master water reclamation plan looked at only recycled water options. Instead of the recycled water options that are out there, indirect potable reuse is, is the way to go. And that's, and that's a, a good document and a good finding there. But what that document didn't answer is, is indirect potable reuse competitive in terms of, of offsetting the city's existing state water supply when you look at the suite of other water supply options that are out there that are not recycled water. So we know what the best recycled water option is. What are the other water options? And so we were able to bring in that analysis, and then look at all the other water options and come up with, yeah, IPR is the right answer. I think some of the other benefits of the recommendations is, this document is, is probably, it's a definitive place where we, we very clearly state that the ocean water desal facility, the ocean water side has passed the end of its useful life, and it's not really a part of the city's existing water resources. And so the money that, that Joe and his staff put into maintaining some of those things, that may not be the best use of funds. Similarly, with the Choro Valley wells and looking at, again, all the options the city has in front of it, you know, ocean desal in the, in the state that it's, the facility's currently in, and then the Choro Well Field, those are on the, on the low end of the priority. And should the city be investing the, the time and money to maintain those facilities?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Marlese, John?
Thanks again, Eric, for going over this briefly, after we've seen this a number of times. Just two questions. First is a question I ask each time, and it's mainly for the audience to understand. Could you remind us if the dollars included in the CIPs that are proposed over the life of this project are, were included in the rate study? And has the cash flow analysis been done to be able to support that?
That's correct. Yep, they are included in the, in the...
Right. So in addition to the building of the plant, water recycling facility, all the infrastructure, piping, et cetera, that rate study included this almost $40 million worth of additional piping that's going to be replaced.
Yeah, and the priority is there, just to do a, a kind of a quick, the, the Reader's Digest version of those improvements are on the water side. We're really looking at replacement and upsizing of the nutmeg tank, improvements to the distribution system to allow for the retirement of the Vashon booster pump station. And then on the collection system side, in addition to kind of some small, kind of routine maintenance and pipe replacements, manhole replacements, we're looking at focusing on the Main Street line north of Atascadero Road.
Right. And the second question is, will the staging of the CIPs, capital improvement projects for, for the public's benefit, address mitigating the most significant concerns and issues such as inadequate fire water pressure in areas where we are problematic, et cetera?
Yeah. So if you were to look at some of the major deficiency, that, if you look at the quote-unquote deficiencies that are in the individual areas of the city's water distribution system, there are slight, if you look at the different zones, there's only a couple that show deficiencies as it relates to shore, to storage, particularly the storage for fire flow. And so, and with the exception of nutmeg, I believe that those areas aren't even deficient under current conditions, or they're deficient under future conditions. So again, looking at it, the nutmeg tank project is, is the most, the most critical project on the water side.
Great. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thanks. Matt?
Okay, Eric, in terms of this, coming back to this, and this is the final version of this. So could you explain how this document will be used? Understanding you've been talking about the various CIP projects, the WRF coming up, but how will this in turns inform those different projects? Will we have to come back and look up the chapter and verse, or will we use, how will we use this information?
So the, really, the most important parts that are going to come out of that, with the water supply evaluation piece, as Ms. McPherson noted, there are some recommendations there about maintaining some existing facilities that the city may determine that they don't want to maintain those facilities anymore. So that's some recommendations that can come right out of there. In terms of the other elements, the, the distribution system, the collection system, and the stormwater system, the most important parts of the CIP. And so within the, that CIP is essentially something that, in working with staff, we identified to the year what activities would occur, what projects would occur, so that you can look and see on any given year for, if the city, the city could very well walk through and, and rigidly use that CIP and say, okay, well, it's now 20, you know, we're coming up on 2019. 2019 says that we're going to bring this project into design, we're going to bring this project into design, and then in 2020, we're going to take that project into construction, and, and could sequence and, and budget the projects accordingly. So it's really, those CIPs are really the, the heart of those projects.
And then, the second question is, in terms of the saltwater wells, in terms of if, how did, were, I forget what chapter you said, or appendix that, I'm talking about mothballing them in there. And then also, in terms of, is the reverse also in there? When and if those needed to be addressed to be brought up to functionality?
That's a good question. So while the recommendation was not made in the One Water Plan for the city to move forward and implement ocean desalination, you can go to chapter seven and look at alternative, I don't remember what alternative is. I think it's alternative six. In that alternative, you could see, you can see the things that would need to be done in order for the city to be able to build a new desal facility. There's a cost in there, a capital cost. There's an annual O and M expenditure for that, and it identifies in the final appendix in the report appendix end, a fairly detailed breakdown of the different line items. So we've got the reconstruction of the desal facility, a cost in there for that. We have significant rehabilitation to those seawater wells that we were just talking about. There's costs that are held, that are carried for those. So you could go back, and in, in several years, things change, and decide to move forward with ocean desal, that would be the first place you would go, is you would go in there, pull out that section of the report and say, okay, this says that we can build a desal facility that'll, that can produce 650 acre-feet a year for X million dollars, and that's something that then you could program into your CIP if you wanted to do that. So there, while we, we didn't recommend certain projects, you could unearth those, those alternatives from there and have a basis for, for planning.
Additionally, what's in the CIP costs is to revisit this document and update it on a regular basis every five years. So not only do we have the cost of the actual construction, we have the cost of keeping this as a relevant document and keeping it up-to-date. And so things will change over the lifetime of this plan. It's a 20-year plan, and we don't know everything that will happen over that next 20 years.
What would be the cost of that, Rob, in terms of revisiting that and updating it every five years?
I don't remember what the cost, it's...
I mean, I'm just thinking in terms of, I think, was $700,000 to do this.
Yeah, I think it's between $100,000 and $200,000 per element. So if you were to, say, in five years, wanted to redo the water piece, there's a significant amount of effort that went into the initial, because the city really did not have a fully dynamic hydraulic model for any of those systems, right? So a lot of the work went into the setup of those individual models. So the city now owns the model and can pick that up. Anybody can pick that up and input the improvements that have been made, and input any changes, relook at the flow projections, either on the water side or the wastewater side, recalibrate the model, and, and, yeah. So a lot of the efforts already been, been completed. So the updates are fairly routine.
All right. Brad?
You said this is a 20-year plan with five-year updates. Does that not in effect make it an infinite plan?
Yes. But we only looked out 20 years for water supply demands. So...
And we typically do these, and they're in line with the general plan, the general plan timing, because we rely pretty heavily on the land use that's identified in the general plan. And so it's, it's not, we typically will do master plan updates as they follow general plan updates, because we use the land use element. And so if the general plan's going out to 2040, then our master plan will typically go out to that same, that same time period. go out to that same, that same time period.
But even given that, I think it is an infinite plan. If we're doing it every five years, we could take those into consideration and, so it's the Morro Bay One Water Forever Plan.
As long as we update it.
As long as we update it. Because we have a Morro Bay One Water Forever Plan, but it got put on a shelf in 1993, and there it sat for, forever.
Okay. But every five years, you will be looking 20 years into the future.
Yes.
Essentially, yeah. Okay. Look, Caltrans, one in five-year plan.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all. Thanks.
I have some comments about putting it on the shelf that I'll get to during remarks. I, I just want to address Mr. Martoni's question. So you got to Meredith Bates' question. Mr. Martoni asked about pipeline alternative, and I, I believe that was taking it up through Radcliffe. And, you know, I wonder if you can address that. I mean, looking at the, the document, I don't see any gaps in any engineering analysis, but the question was posed, and I was just hoping you could address that.
And I believe his question wasn't necessarily to do with the One Water Plan, it had to do with the Wharf project itself and looking at.
But in it, in of itself, yeah.
The pipeline alignment. So an alignment, so just to put on my other hat real quick and, and talk about the Wharf project, the, an alignment north of Highway 1 was looked at, and it wasn't the preferred alignment. And not to get too ahead of the process, but we're planning on bringing, likely bringing the 30% design document for the designer for the pipelines will be coming to Wharf CAC and City Council towards the end of this year, beginning of next year. And we'll go through the different alignments that we looked at.
Cool.
And so we can answer that with more detail, but there was some issues with some archaeological site, there was a number of different reasons why that was not the preferred alignment.
One of them being, it was one of the higher cost options.
And it was also more expensive, and there's a risk element to it as well.
Great. Okay, thanks. If there's no other questions, I don't have any speaker slips for this item, I'm just going to scan the audience.
One thing that we forgot to address, part of Ms. Bates', question was, why are we reskining the built, the metal building?
Yeah.
And because we do need to keep that brackish water RO protected from the elements. And those buildings need to be rehabbed every so often, being in a salt air environment. So to, to protect that electrical and components, we'll be reskining that building.
Thanks for connecting the dots, Rob. And with that, are there any public comment for this item? Come on up. Thanks, Eric.
Thanks.
Since that stays this long, I'm going to make a comment. Bob Keller, resident of Morro Bay. Anyway, it's going to be short. On the Water, One Water Plan approval, I support the recommendation to the City Council that we support this, including 2 and 3. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council and for discussion deliberation. Red?
Well, this is the culmination of a long process, and we have been kept in the communication loop all along the way. And I didn't see anything new in the plan except for an executive summary that summarized what we've already read, so I'm ready to approve staff recommendation.
Great. Matt?
I too am in favor through this whole process and then the culmination and having it all explained like it's been, so good job. And so I am also in approval of it.
Thanks. John?
Thank you. I'm also in support of approving it. What a fantastic planning exercise you've gone through, a subjective analysis, objective analysis, an assessment and a plan that not only is extremely comprehensive, but also has a wonderful strategic implementation schedule that I think is very important to the city. I wanted to make sure that those five-year follow-ups, that somehow there's a schedule for it, to routinely come back to the city. And I think maybe where the mayor was headed is, is documents sitting on the shelf, but I know that somewhere along the line that we will have some kind of routine report, not only the capital approval each year for the CIPs that will come through the budget, but a routine, not five-year redo, but a routine look at the relevance of the major components of it, possibly on an annual basis as those CIPs are presented. So I'm very much in support of it, and thank you for the great, great project.
Thanks. Marlese?
Yep. Well, I also want to thank you both for the product, which is excellent, and also for the process that was used, which was very impressive, the way the community was involved in a major way in developing this plan. And I also wanted to reach out and thank the Blue Ribbon Commission because I think they played a very vital role in narrowing down and prioritizing the capital improvement projects. And I know that when you lay out all the needs of a city, you really have to start with, well, what can the city afford right now? And, and so that's a crucial part of the plan, so I really want to say thank you to them for helping us to do that so that we have a realistic plan that we can actually implement. So I'm very supportive of all the recommendations.
Great. First off, I want to echo the thanks to the Blue Ribbon Committee, but specifically all our advisory boards that have been involved in this, this process and the One Water Plan and staff for doing such a great job on this. I look at this document as a document that's part of our budget and financial documents. It's part of our general plan and local coastal document. And One Water Plan is one of those documents that we are looking as guidebooks for the future of every part of this city. To get to my comments about the document being on the shelf, I asked the question earlier today and just want to follow up on that and have that discussion with council. My initial question when we reviewed this, well, first of all, I just, you know, just have to echo the thanks because this is a really important document, once again, but why we're not adopting this by resolution? And as we adopt our general plan and local coastal plan, that will be by resolution. And so I, what I want to propose is to do, is to have a resolution come back in how we adopt this that will spell out some of the requirements that have to do with review, implementation. It could be something with language that specifies the requirements to adopt and implement, such as our five-year CIP, review how often we are going to be updating that, water supply options, whether or not the Public Works Advisory Board are involved in that. I'm not, I didn't necessarily get into the details of what a resolution would look like, but wanted to open up the discussion. But I think it's very important that it is adopted by resolution because it does, it binds the document into what we're going to do to implement it. And having seen other documents that haven't necessarily had the follow-through, I believe the resolution is that tool to make sure we follow through with it. So I, I would want to open that up for discussion and how we go about that, and then, and then perhaps engage staff and how we could bring this back at an next council meeting with a, a resolution and adopt it at that point with, with language that would meet some of our discussion. And those are my comments, and don't know if I want to have council engage in that or staff respond to what we could be doing with that. Any comments from council?
Go ahead.
Well, I, I think I'd like to hear what staff has to say in terms of doing that. Would that come back on consent? And is this, is this something you would normally do? I guess I'd like staff's response to that suggestion. But I, I'm perfectly happy to do that. I have no objections.
I, I don't know about the, if this is normal protocol or not. I mean, I can see that the virtues of having a resolution, certainly easier to find when you're doing searches, you know, in the future, looking back how we got to where we are. I would say maybe adopt tentatively with the resolution to come on consent because we will have a full slate of, of agenda items the next, the new regular meeting, and plus we have another one scheduled for the 29th of November as well. So if we could put it on consent, knowing that council's supporting it, they're just looking for a formal kind of history of the process and kind of moving forward how we want to do that, maybe give us clear direction tonight about what you want in that resolution, then we'll have certainty about the consent.
Okay.
I would suggest you add a number four that directs staff to bring back a resolution for consent agenda to formalize the adoption.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just say I support it. This, this crosses a number of strategic planes, and in order to connect the dots, I think a resolution does that and keeps it before us and allows staff to have a document and the public to have a document to see how these interconnections and interplays will be reviewed in the future. So, great point, and I'd support that.
Any other comments? So we can include, go ahead, Red?
Yes, I, I see this, you know, a long time ago, you and I talked about parking management.
Yeah, that's one that comes to mind.
And you directed me to the 2007 parking management plan.
Yeah.
That was adopted by council and never implemented.
Yeah.
And there was funding in, as part of the adoption.
Mm-hmm.
It was ready to go.
Yes.
It just didn't happen, so.
And that's one of the lessons.
Yeah, so I, I certainly see the virtues of what you're saying. Every policy needs a procedure. And this plan is the policy, and a resolution is the procedure. So, yeah, I definitely want to go ahead with that.
Thank you. So we could add number four to the staff recommendations and to include a resolution that would be adopted for implementation of the One Water Plan. You know, I would just, briefly, I put in there with language that specifies the requirement, how we adopted the story, implement the, a five-year CIP, how it's integrated into annual budgets.
Funding.
That would be part of that. You know, if, if the, you know, Prop 218 review policy integrates into that, we're supposed to be reviewing the rates in there. I, I don't want to complicate it, but I'm just throwing that, things out there, and unless there's a need to go into a real detailed discussion, I think we could just leave it at that and then let you bring it back to us and, and go from there. Are there any follow-up comments to that?
I think consent would be appropriate as well.
Yeah, okay.
One thing I heard was perhaps a desire for maybe not a 768-page report, but a, at least a brief report on an annual basis, kind of on the state of the utilities.
I think that could come in budget time with CIPs.
Yeah.
Right. That was my hope, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Take a, take a motion.
Yeah, I would move that we approve the One Water Plan, and we incorporate the One Water Capital Improvement Program into the city's annual budget and use the recommendations for water supply options section of the plan as guidance in consideration development and implementation regarding the composition of the city's future water supply portfolio. And that staff bring back an appropriate ordinance that would be on, resolution, I'm sorry, on resolution on consent as a guideline for implementation.
Second.
So a motion and by Mr. Heding, second by Ms. McPherson, to include the staff recommendations of the three items and bring back a resolution that would come back on consent at the next, well, it didn't necessarily say that, but come back on consent, we'll get to the other part. Any further discussion on that? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. So being able to bring back the resolution in a time period of, do we, can we consider?
He's always looking at me, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. Next meeting potentially? Maybe December?
I, I think it's a fairly simple resolution, right?
And the council won't need a staff report, right? Just the resolution?
You would attach this, this report.
I would, I would, it would be hopeful, helpful if it's on consent to have at least some brief description. So we know how it got there. For our community members, when it comes on consent, there's, there is that need. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Okay. That concludes item C2. Next up, item C3. This is City Council Input and Direction on Harbor Direction Lease Management Policy. And Eric, we always leave the best for last.
Not quite last, I think we got one more.
We got a couple more after that.
But I appreciate the sentiment.
Or, or not.
Thank you, Mary Aronson, council. As you know, the Harbor Department Lease Management Policy is a goal item of the council, of this important document. And on September 25th, just a few months ago, we had this in front of the council for consideration, where we wanted some input and direction on a draft process and timeline. And while you were supportive of the proposal in general, the process in general, you were concerned the timeline was too short and wanted to bring back a little research and, input on a potential professional facilitator or some sort of moderator to assist in the process, what I call a cat herding process, so to speak. So we're bringing those two things back, we're bringing back a timeline, as follows in your staff report, and I can outline it briefly. November of this year would be staff and a working group and a facilitator or moderator, if one is retained, determine what everybody's roles and responsibilities and process execution logistics look like. I call this the handing out assignments phase. November and December of this year, we'd be proposing to do the research and fact-finding. I call this the beg, borrow and steal phase. In other words, find all the other policies and things out there that other people have, don't want to reinvent the wheel, so want to see whatever the other folks are doing, other public agencies are doing. By January 7th, 2019, the deadline of sorts, the working group evaluate what all the research and fact-finding developed and preparation for development of the policy and the, and the structure. And again, this phase would be, you know, starting to develop and see what our, our paperwork might look like. And then by January 14th of 2019, we'd be creating the outline, policy structure and determined work products to be produced. I call this the get-to-work phase. In other words, we really create what the process is going to look like. On January 22nd, 2019, we bring the proposed general outline, outline and policy structure and work products back to council for input and direction. So this would be the first reality check with the City Council phase, bringing it, make sure we're on the right track and we're, we're hitting all the targets we want to hit. And then February through April, that's when we really perform the policy update work. Calling this the rubber hitting the road phase, this is where we actually develop all the policy updates and add-on documents that we're proposing. And then by May 2nd of next year, we'd have a draft updated policy, including all the add-on and follow-on documents developed to date to bring to the Harbor Advisory Board for their input. And then by May 14th, bring the draft updated policy, including all the documentation to the City Council for consideration of adoption. And then as needed, we could bring things back to the Harbor Advisory Board or the City Council if needed, if we needed update reality checks or, or significant decision-making times, we could bring that to either of those two bodies for input and direction. But in all seriousness, creating distinct phases would really aid the process and flow and organization of it and create some, some milestones that we could achieve. For the facilitator and moderator that you requested, I go look for and see what we could bring back. Identified and reached out to several professionals engaged in such processes. I got a proposal from one, Brad Britton of Britton Consulting. He proposed, after speaking to him, both contacting him by email and both speaking to him on phone, kind of outlined what our thought on this process was and this timeline. He developed collaboratively, working with me, what he thought a, a process might look like, and he estimated it would cost somewhere between $10,500 and $14,000, depending on the group and how efficient the process was. You know, there's a lot of unknowns out there, we've never done this before, so that was his estimate on what it would take. That was the only proposal I received despite reaching out to several other entities or at several other people. I received two other offers from Morro Bay residents. residents, one from Ron Reisner, who you should be familiar with, he's our Harbor Advisory Board Chairman, and another one, Marty Lomelli, who also you should be familiar with. He was our interim city manager for a while. Both offered pro bono to reach out and help with that process if we so choose. So, we're seeking council concurrence on the proposed timeline and any other input you might have on that, and also on what sort of facilitator direction we might want to take, whether we want a paid independent process professional or a volunteer from the community with obvious process expertise and experience. If we go the paid professional route, we'll take either cutting expenses or redirecting expenses in our existing operating budget, because we don't have it budgeted for, obviously, or drawing from the Harvard Accumulation Fund. And depending on which way you go with that, we may have to return with a resolution approving a budget amendment. So, with that, I'll open it back up to council.
Okay, great. We'll open it up for questions from council. And Red, you want to lead us up on questions?
The very first step, November, staff and working group and moderator determine roles, responsibilities and process. Considering that we are halfway through November, holiday season, we have, did I hear we have two more meetings this month? 27th and 29th?
Yes, we're packing a big punch in November.
Are you asking for another meeting?
No, I'm, I'm just wondering if that's a little aggressive for November.
Once we get the group together, I think it will go fairly smoothly. I won't say quickly, but I probably will bleed into November, but we've got November and December to get into the research and fact finding, some of which we've already done when we started on this process earlier this year. So, I don't see a problem with the group. You know, once we figure out who's going to help head it up, that person ought to be able to hit the road pretty quickly and get things moving.
Okay. And you have, okay, that's all my questions. Matt?
Looking at the front, letter A, staff and working group. So, my one first question is to you, Eric. A lot of this is going to come down on you with your other responsibilities and getting this all together and getting it going. And as we're talking, Red's talking about the timeline, how confident are you with that? I mean, I know you've just said you could do it, but still, you're going to take yet more on.
Well, that was the genesis of looking for a facilitator or moderator, was to take some of that load off. So, that obviously is going to help me. I think that front end of the process is going to be the easier, simpler part of the process. Getting down and looking what's out there for other agencies and entities that have such documents and researching that, take a little more time. It's really getting the group together and getting the assignments and getting, you know, subcommittees or working groups or however we end up forming ourselves, out there and hitting the road and putting together policy and reaching out and getting input from the community and wherever else we want to look for input. That's where most of the time is going to be spent, and I think we've allotted plenty of time for that. The front end part bleeds a little further in. I'm not too concerned about it. It's the, it's the rubber hitting the road part of developing the documents that's going to take the most time.
And then knowing, well, okay, great. That's, I guess, where my next question is going. Knowing that we've had two people volunteer their services and that are very diligent about their work, would it be possible, have you considered using both of them?
I had not.
I mean, just because I'm watching both of them in their various capacities and doing what they've done, I don't know, maybe we would, that would be unfair to both of them.
It's, it's, that's a good idea. I mean, it's a way of thinking about it and not necessarily splitting the two, you know, splitting the baby, but subdividing it up into different, you know, categories or different phases that the two could work on either independently or concurrently or separately. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, that's all my questions.
All right, thanks. John?
Thanks, Eric, for bringing this back. Have you identified the working group members as of yet?
I have some, staff-wise internally, be from my department, obviously myself, Lori Stilt, because she works pretty closely with me, Cindy Jasons from Community Development to get the planning and permitting perspective, and the leaseholders that I reached out to previously, I'm still engaged with, and those are, Ken Scott's not a leaseholder anymore, but Smith Hald is another one. I've got a couple others that we've been talking to, so those are the group members that we've identified so far, yes.
Do you have a, any HAB members that will be part of the group?
Yeah, we already, that's, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, we already, the Harbor Advisory Board already took a vote at our last meeting or two meetings ago. And our two new members, Shree Hansen and Mark Blackford, would be the two from the Harbor Advisory Board that would be representing.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Marla?
I don't really have any questions. I was interested, I guess, in Mr. Reisner's role. I thought perhaps he was going to be a participant on the working group, but you're suggesting he is not.
Correct. My, as I just spoke, my two HAB members representing directly for the HAB would be Shree St. Mark.
Did they volunteer? Is that how it happened, or?
Well, like any volunteer thing happens on a body like this, they were nominated and volunteered. They went willingly.
They did?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. I could already tell Joe was thinking Brown Act on having two council, two HAB members and then, and then Ron as a facilitator, which, you know, I.
How many members are on the HAB?
Seven.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so I appreciate, I appreciate the thoughts and questions. And I don't have any questions. I'll just get into comments, so I'll open up to a public comment at this point. Anybody for public comment on this? None? Thank you. So, I'll bring it back to council for comments. And Marla, so I'll start you out for discussion?
Well, given your explanation about the timeline, I'm comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with where we're going. I think in terms of a facilitator, I would opt for Mr. Lomelli, just because he's a neutral person. And I think on, especially given that the Harbor Advisory Board is going to eventually see this, it seems to me you would want a neutral facilitator, not someone that has possibly a vested interest. So, I mean, they're obviously both very qualified and obviously, I mean, it makes more sense to take a volunteer who's going to do it pro bono than to pay someone when you don't have the money. So, I think those are my thoughts on it.
Thanks, Marla. John?
Thanks. So, Eric, thanks for the timeline and for your confidence in being able to meet it. It looks aggressive, but so be it. I agree with Marla. I think Mr. Lomelli would be an excellent facilitator, not that Mr. Reisner would not, but there might be inherent conflicts of interest and/or Brown Act issues with regard to two other members being there. So, that would be my recommendation. No need to pay somebody from the outside when we have a known internal entity that's worked here and certainly has the skillset to make it happen and could relieve you of a lot of functions, I would hope.
Okay. Matt?
I see your point. And, I mean, Marty's would be absolutely great. I just thought, my thinking was to get Mr. Reisner involved is just because he has a wealth of knowledge in dealing with this, and I know he'll be involved in any case on Harbor. But just knowing that he, what package he brings to it, I thought would be good for the process. So, that's just where I'm coming from.
Thanks. Red?
Yes, I agree with Marla and John. I'm happy with Mr. Lomelli and I would rather not have Mr. Reisner, I would rather not have two moderators, one moderator is plenty.
Okay, all right. I guess, Eric, I'm going to follow up with a couple of questions first that I didn't ask prior to. So, as far as, John asked, who are the working members on that? And so, I think at the previous discussion, we were discussing this, we were talking about having bankers involved, real estate contractors, things like that. Or is that still on the menu of stakeholders that could help us with this?
Yes, absolutely. I was almost going to mention that one, when that was brought up. I've spoken to a couple of my leaseholders and gotten some names from them in the banking industry, you know, folks that they're working with. Absolutely, yes. Chamber Commerce, all sorts of expertise out there that we're going to tap.
Okay. And then, I don't have, this is great to put the timeline together. I don't have any expectations that May will be the date. I think it's aggressive. I appreciate it, because we had to come up with something, but I think it'll be fluid and I would expect that it would be a little bit longer than that. So, I just had to say that. And there'll probably be somebody else here to make those, obviously. But I just think it's great to see the schedule, just understanding. I think expectation-wise, I think it'll, it'll take a little bit longer. I support John and Marla and Red, and thanks for the comments, Matt, but I think Marty would be great to take on the role. Thanks, Marty, if you're watching. And I don't have any additional comments. This is the main direction you were looking for right here, is that right?
Correct.
And I just want to make sure that the stakeholders, the people that were involved in that would, would compile the stakeholders that we were hoping for.
Yep.
Okay.
Could I ask another question?
Sure, absolutely.
Yes, that I neglected to ask. And that is, Red and I were appointed as a subcommittee on this issue. And I'm just wondering if you had thought about our involvement in the process? Were you expecting us to participate?
Well, Brown Act issues aside for a minute with meetings.
Right.
Yes, I would see your being participatory, much like with the Trident Winds process now, where we've got our two council members involved, boatyard negotiations, same idea would be having you involved in a, in part when things come up and as needed, yes.
Okay, good.
Is that what you were anticipating?
Yes, yes, yes. Just wanted to verify. We didn't talk about it.
So, is that something that we agreed on in the, previously?
It was. We just need to be careful on how we structure your participation so that we don't end up having another Brown Act body that we have to.
Yeah, I think it's worth discussing. I've been pretty vocal about my concern and on the subcommittee and how we, so I think it's worth discussing exactly what the roles will be, so we carry those out. What do you envision, what would we envision the role of the subcommittee being, interacting with this? I guess that's a question. What is the subcommittee going to do in a group for, if we're doing the stakeholders, what is it going to bring to the, to that, that's going to help this process along? I envision that this is a working stakeholders group. We have a facilitator. It's something that's carrying its own process. So, I fail to see where the subcommittee would interact at this point.
I would see the group working mostly individually on whatever their assignments are, you know, dividing up and conquering whatever they're dividing and conquering.
That's the point, what our assignments are.
Occasional coming together as an overall group and bouncing things off each other and making decisions and moving forward. I see the council subcommittee not necessarily participating in the larger group process if we have everybody get together, because now we're Brown Act and with HAB members and makes things more complicated unless we want to go down that complicated road. I see the council subcommittee members being advisory to this working group body and also being entrusted by the council, much like we've done our other subcommittees with, with carrying, you know, council policy and wishes forward and making sure the council's wishes are being heard and being taken into account as we move forward, creating documentation and the documents that we're looking to work on. Does that make sense?
It does, but I don't see the effect of a subcommittee personally. That's just my feeling. I think, as I've been told and heard many times, you have to trust the process. And I think the process that you're talking about is something that could work and come back to council. I know this is going to move on beyond December and January, but those are my comments. Anybody else?
I'm just likening it to the cannabis development of the ordinance and would wonder from the two cannabis subcommittee members, how that worked. And as you worked with staff to develop the ordinance, so to speak, is this a similar process? And is it necessary for you to be at every meeting, which maybe I think not, but to be a processing agent for the council to bring back information? Or what's the work product we outlined for the subcommittee at the meeting is another question as well. The prior meeting, we appointed them.
I don't see this process as being similar to the cannabis, because essentially, that was the subcommittee working with the attorney. And we did bring in a couple of cannabis operators as advisory for one meeting. But we were our own working group. This is a much larger group with a broader picture to paint. The cannabis subcommittee was focused on a single product, which was an ordinance that met legal requirements. So, I, I'm going along with Jamie here. I'm not sure that we have a role.
Yeah, and if I could just chime in, that what I saw my role or potential role on a subcommittee, more because this was directed by council and we had specific concerns about the leasing and, and the way that they are handled and the way that they're evaluated in the entire process, I would see the subcommittee's role, just to make sure at any point, if they're off track or they're moving into things that, not what the council's looking for, we just try to redirect. That, that's the way I would see it. Not necessarily on content per se, but maybe that's not an appropriate role.
Yeah, I don't feel it is. I feel that let the process go and I think there can be updates. That's just my feeling on that.
I think that's the city manager role, what you just described, in essence, but just from a staff standpoint and.
Yeah. And my, my experience in, at least in Santa Cruz, it's the only one I have, where we had extensive use of subcommittees. They were six months in nature, no longer, and they were very, as Brad was saying, outcome oriented. You know, some product is going to be delivered, whether it's a tax measure, you know, they are doing the working group work, basically. So, I think Jamie's right. This is kind of like, well, there's a working group that's doing the work and the council is the body that ultimately is the recipient of that work. We're here to help interpret your direction with the committee to keep them on track. So, that's just how it worked in Santa Cruz. And I think we have a blend of that here, sometimes we're product oriented, sometimes it's process oriented and gets, some role confusion could happen since, instance.
So, I guess we just need to come to consensus on that. I'm, based, based on some of the discussions, I would prefer letting the group do its work. And if we need updates, we can, you know, I would expect, there's not updates in this timeline, but certainly, Eric, you can give us those updates and we can have updates on that?
Absolutely. Just like with the HAB.
I'm still saying we and updates.
To the council.
Sorry. Yeah. Okay. All right, thanks. Is there any other comments on where we're going with this then?
I was just trying to recall when we appointed a subcommittee, what the charter was. Do we have that in? I've just, I don't remember specifically. Didn't we, didn't we appoint a subcommittee a couple of meetings ago? And I wondered why. I'm trying to remember why.
Yeah, me too.
Sorry. One of those moments. Just to help refresh my memory, and that might clarify things.
Do you have it?
Just looking for my notes. I don't recall specifically. I do remember the two council members assigned to that.
I think, I think they might have been, it might have been contemplated they were going to be on the working group. And then we ran into the Brown Act issue.
I would suggest let the working group go and we discontinue the subcommittee conversation and move on to the next item.
Yep.
All right.
I'm okay with that.
That's fine.
All right, okay, cool. Then we've concluded this item. Then we've concluded this item. We've got enough discussion for direction?
Yeah, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, there's no motion necessary. We'll conclude this and move on to the next item. Item C4. Mr. Collins, this is a direction regarding potential reuse and soon-to-be-decommissioned trolley.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. So before you, you have a couple options, I would say, under the recommendation, not necessarily, staff not really picking one over the other, so we just kind of put them out there for food for thought more than anything. The first option is to look at selling the trolley that's set for decommissioning. As council probably recalls, several meetings back, we brought forward an item to purchase a new trolley, decommissioning the old one that's kind of reached its end of its useful life, over 100,000 miles on it, and still functional, but, you know, it's kind of met the regulations for its use, and we were able to acquire outside funding to pay for it. So if we were to pursue some other option with the trolley, we'd have to look at how we'd refund our transportation fund. So the first option would be to sell the trolley, send all the proceeds to the city's transportation fund, and pursue further review of the option to locate the city's visitor center at the old aquarium building or somewhere else. The second option would be direct staff to conduct further review of reuse of the old trolley as a mobile visitor center. And the last is really kind of open-ended, some blend of those options or something else. This is, this was part of that discussion that came up. I think council was being very creative in how we could reuse the trolley to address some, one of our bigger issues that are plaguing us is the location of the visitor center. It's currently not in an ideal setting. It's far away from where our tourists are. It's hard to find. It's exceptionally well-run by the chamber on contract with the city. They have excellent customer service skills. We hear that continually. They do the best they can, but they're not, they're not in a good situation. They're not in a good location. So I think council was being very creative in, you know, trying to solve one problem by using a creative mechanism to get our visitor center, whatever form or fashion it is, where the people are. And that's where the idea came to reuse this trolley that's set for decommissioning and place it in the Embarcadero. Just to pursue that idea and really come back with some sense of what that would cost, if it would even work. So staff did some very, I'll say, qualified, very preliminary work on this, because we've got a lot going on. But just want to make sure council understands if we were to reuse this trolley in any way, shape, or form and not sell it, we would need to reimburse the city's transportation fund for that value. We estimate that to be anywhere between $40,000 to $50,000. That would have to come from the general fund or some other qualifying source. We don't have that money on hand necessarily, so that's kind of an issue just to take on immediately. But I think that just looking at creatively also opened our eyes to other opportunities and really looking at the root issue. The root issue is not the trolley so much as the location of the visitor center. And deliberated at the department head level, and actually Jen Little thought of the idea of, well, you know, what if we combined our visitor center with the aquarium? It's a vacant building. We know we have some potential reuse of that in the future, but it's kind of down the road. We don't want vacant storefront down in the Embarcadero. And maybe, maybe there's a way to make this all work. And so I talked among staff, I talked to Erica at the chamber, talked to council members and others in the community, just to really get a sense of this, if this is a viable option. And certainly sounds like it's something at least worth further review. I wouldn't say we're in a position where he can give you really good numbers about what it would take to outfit the visitor center, or the aquarium to be visitor center-ready, how that would play with another temporary use potentially with the Central Coast Aquarium, et cetera. So there's a lot of unanswered questions, but I think, I think council appreciates that we want to try to solve the visitor center dilemma. You know, they used to be in the Embarcadero, they had great numbers, and moved up into downtown areas, still kind of making the connection of the visitor-serving area of the town, and then it moved even further away. And the numbers have decreased with each one of those moves. I would say some of that has to do with this. We're able to get around by phone in any situation, however, that never replaces the face-to-face interaction. People like going in to the visitor center. They also like the bathroom being there. I think these are important things. You can't necessarily put a price tag on, so we wouldn't see the value of getting rid of it. So those are kind of the ways we looked at it. As I mentioned, the trolley, the issue right there is just where do you find the money upfront to pay the transportation fund? But it certainly could be, could be worked out if we had that part. And then if the aquarium is a viable place to at least consider looking into, we would do that work or consider other locations in the Embarcadero or lower downtown that connects, connects to the tourist-serving area. So that kind of in general is where we're at. As I said, the aquarium, there would be some cost to outfitting it, potential rent payment that would be due because it's in the Thailand Trust area, how it'd work with another use. All those things need to have further discussion before we feel comfortable making a strong recommendation. But we wanted to get back to council, at least on this trolley thing, and open it up for further discussion.
Okay, thanks for that. Thanks for putting all this together. You know, I know I agendized this, and I didn't mean to necessarily create all this, but in one respect, it's created some thought, so that's a good thing. No expectations on, hey, we're going to take action, at least in my mind, but thanks, thanks, Scott.
For sure. And thanks to Erica.
And Rob, and Janine, and everybody. Thank you. So with that, we'll open for questions. Red, would you lead us off on questions?
When you mentioned the other option for the visitor center, you talk about apparently separating the visitor center staff from the chamber staff. Did you say that the city would no longer pay the chamber to operate the visitor center?
I would say that's one option to look at. I mean, there's, you have to look at staffing, you have to look at location, you have to look at rents, you have to look at all those things in totality before we could make a recommendation. So that would be one thing is to look at staffing, whether it continues to operate as it has been under Chamber of Commerce. We know there's a lot of synergy between tourism and chamber, and, you know, we wouldn't necessarily want to lose that. And I think they do, like I said, they do a great job, you know, overseeing that operation, also helping oversee the building in general that they're placed in. So that certainly could play, continue in that vein, or we could do a different thing. I think we just need to be open to various options and have a good discussion about what that would look like.
Do you have any idea what... I assume you've been inside the aquarium building?
No, actually haven't.
Okay.
Eric's given me detailed reports.
Okay, and I've, I've made an appointment with Eric to go in Thursday afternoon to take a look at it myself. So you don't, we don't have, or maybe Eric, do you have any idea what the cost would be to make it habitable for a visitor-serving activity?
Obviously, basic cleanup, some paint, you know, standard interior treatments. There's a restroom downstairs. I don't know that it's compatible for public use, for employee use, obviously. Electrical system, I'm working on getting an electrician in there to have a good look. I think the, the part of the electrical system I'm more concerned about is the big 220-volt system that powered all the pumps and everything. I think the standard electrical system that's there just powers, the lighting and everything else is okay, but I need, want to have an electrician look at all that. You know, floor coverings, standard stuff. Cost-wise, oh, boy. Man, that's a shot in the dark, Mike.
Well, let me put it another way...
Depends if you're hiring people, you got volunteers, and what kind of materials are you having to buy?
Where would the money come from to do that?
Good question.
Oh.
Yeah. Excellent question. And I think, I think it would be, you know, we'd have to put that, you know, right next to the trolley. It could be in the same, could be in the same ballpark, but having a physical sort of a more permanency than a mobile thing that has its own set of permitting issues and, you know, as Joan mentioned, potential ADA issues, though the aquarium may have that as well with the bathroom. It's not, it's not a perfect solution, but I think before we can just say no, we need to answer your question about cost. And if it's in the $50,000 to $60,000 range, it may be, may not be able to make it go. I mean, and that's where I think you had to look, I mean, realistically look at that contract, which we pay for the chamber oversight of the visitor centers, $50,000 a year. I mean, that's one source, but then you lose, if you do that, then you lose their exceptional service. So I mean, it's, again, I think it just requires a little more analysis before we'd want to rule it out entirely.
And I'm going to jump back in as the landlord, so to speak. You know, basically now we're going to have a building lease. It's not going to be a ground lease where the leaseholder, whether it's aquarium or visitor center, a combination thereof, owns the whole site and manages the whole site. We're going to be doing a building lease, and it's going to be our responsibility to lease somewhat of a turnkey operation in terms of cleanliness and basic interior amenities. And then it's up to the, to the lesee to dial it in or trick it out or whatever you want to call it to make it how they want it on the interior. So we, as a harbor department, will, you know, like I say, get the basics in place and ready and clean and ready to go, and then it'll be up to the tenants to customize it out.
Do you have harbor funds that are available for that sort of operation?
Yeah, I don't anticipate that. Mostly it's going to be elbow grease and manpower, cleaning things out. And the downstairs, there's not too much left down there. It's mostly upstairs and in the back that where things are. But just the basic cleanup job, you know, I'm going to put my staff on it and our, our funds that we have for basic operations for buildings and whatnot to do. I don't anticipate it's going to be, you know, tens of thousands of dollars worth of work to get it basically cleaned up and ready to go. To customize it out for a visitor center aquarium, yeah, that's going to take some more money if they want to do, get more elaborate on interior furnishings and whatnot.
And Christine has mentioned the possibility of putting in a gift shop to be operated on the weekends. Is there any timeline on that? Or do we have, we still don't have a firm commitment that they're going to lease that from us, do we?
That's correct. We don't. Right, and that's why it was very sort of cagey in this other option, because there's a lot of other pieces that I don't have answers to as well about, you know, whether they're going to really pursue that or not, both the short-term and the long-term lease. So that's, remains to be seen. If they in fact want to pursue a gift shop while they work towards the longer term, that's where you can see a close-knit collaboration between visitor center, which it would be open all, every day of the week, and then gift shop just on the weekend. Again, having, having a complete vacant storefront down there is not a good thing, especially in the summertime. So that's what really sparked our imagination. Well, really, Jamie kind of throwing out the trolley idea, but kind of, hey, you know, maybe there's a way to solve all this. We don't have all the answers, but I feel like there's an answer there. Just need more time to work on it.
I don't have any more questions.
All right. Matt?
I was going to ask you a question, Scott, and then to Eric, but then you just made me think of something. In terms of if we do not have the money to do the refurbishing of the inside of the building and/or the refurbishing of the trolley, I have seen this in other municipalities where they window dress empty buildings on a very cursory level. So that is an option also in terms of whether or not the aquarium comes in or whatnot. We could at least dress that up so it doesn't look vacant.
Yeah, that's a great point. And Jen Little is thinking just like you, Matt, and already, has already kind of, has something like that planned. I don't know exactly when that's going to roll out, but definitely ahead of the summer.
So that is an option. So then the other options in terms of the money for the trolley, and I guess Erica would include, in terms of if we went to fix up the trolley and make it ADA compliant and whatever that entails necessarily, then the additional $40,000 to pay off the trolley, would we be splitting that money between harbor and general fund?
The visitor in that trolley?
Yeah. I don't know. Okay, these are what-ifs. Just because if one doesn't happen, and then, you know, I'm just trying to think that both of them are going to be problematic monetarily, I'm speaking. And then you're thinking that the visitor center, if it's the trolley, would the chamber be running it also, or would that be city?
I mean, I think that that all comes down to money, right? And, you know, could it be, would it just be kind of an ancillary to the existing visitor center, kind of that's their home base?
Sure.
And then it's one person that is down there. Or, I mean, Councilmember McPherson and I talked earlier today, you know, she threw out the idea of a kiosk that could, similar, you know, it's a smaller thing, and maybe it's just one person there, and again, other ships back up where the existing visitor center is, or we just blow that up and it's just one person down there and chamber manages it from afar. I mean, again, there's a lot of options out there. I think that's where we're trying to stay in that mindset of just brainstorm and maybe bring something back. But the trolley thing, you know, if we want to say the trolley's off or not, we can just keep it in. We can hold it until we make a decision, and that's fine, too.
Okay. John?
Thanks, Scott. Have we involved stakeholders such as the chamber board, other business members, the downtown association in discussions with this? Any of the Embarcadero business owners, et cetera?
Nope. As far as it got was, it was Eric at the chamber and brainstorming with staff and bringing it to council, because we wanted to be responsive on the trolley component and really start that conversation.
Thank you.
Marlis?
How long do we have before we would need to sell the trolley? Is there any kind of date by which we have to sell it? Or can we hang on to it for a while while we make a decision or get more information?
I don't think we have a firm deadline on selling that trolley. The replacement is fully funded, so we probably don't want to hang on to it too long, given where we are. And if it just sits, it will dissolve.
Right. So when do we get the replacement? Or do we already have it?
The replacement's been ordered. I think they're fabricating it right now, so...
So we have some time?
Yes.
Okay. And I think I asked, Scott, how long it might take, because now we've raised more options about a possible visitor center. And I even threw out the Distazio building, because that's going to be vacant for, part of it is being used, but again, we own that building, so we wouldn't have to pay rent. And so I fully appreciate the need to relocate the visitor center. It's just that I want to make sure that we have enough time to review all the possible options before we make a snap decision. So that's how I was, why I was asking about your staff time and how much time you would take, if you really wanted to look at all of the possible options and cost them out and...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we would have the ability to look at all options. I think we could probably, we could give a cursory look, you know, meet as a team, reach out to a few stakeholders, as Councilmember Heading suggested, and come up with a short list to look at. And maybe it's Distazio's aquarium, since we'll have more information soon about, hopefully about that lease with them, with CCA, and maybe a few other spots, maybe including somewhere in downtown. I think ultimately, it'd be good if we're going to move in a different direction to have that movement occur before the summer, if possible. But again, you know, that's, that may be ambitious, even, even now as we sit here in November.
Well, plus, some of these are very short-term solutions. They might last only two years. I was talking to Christine Johnson, and she thought, you know, if this feasibility study comes out okay, and if they really get moving, they could start construction in two years. So you really do need to weigh, how much do you want to spend to have a visitor center for two years?
True.
So I'm saying there's lots of variables that go into the decision. Okay, I think you've answered my questions. Thanks.
Okay, all right. I think most of the questions have been asked in this, and I'll get into my discussion afterwards, but anybody for a public comment? Erica? Hey, look at that. Thanks for coming, Erica.
Yeah, sure thing. I live in the city now, so I went home and ate dinner and I came back.
Yeah, I know. Thank you for doing that.
So I just wrote a little something up, keeping it real broad, because I know it's early, and I've had discussions with all of you. I've been really grateful for the transparency and communication among city staff. I have a great relationship, very collaborative with Scott Collins and Jennifer Little. I'm just very pleased to see the council having a public discussion about the visibility and viability of the visitor center in its current location. Given the speed with which this item came to council consideration, the chamber's board of... of Directors has not yet been given the chance to consider a future relocation of the visitor center. I did just want to take the opportunity to remember that the Chamber Board, who are my bosses, leading the strategic vision of the organization, represents a wide swath of the business community. Greater than half of the 12-person board is from industries directly impacted by tourism. And in 2019, we'll have three directors from the restaurant industry, two from lodging, two from retail and paid recreation. And then the professional and service industry directors, two interact with tourism as it's the city's main economic driver. So we're a nice diverse kind of group to be watching over our visitor center and making those recommendations, plugging people into interacting with our economy. So the Chamber looks forward to further discussion on the item, and I look forward to hearing discussion. That's it.
All right. Erica, thank you. Anybody else for a public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back. I'm going to dive into a couple of comments just to start out on this. Thanks. And I don't necessarily, this isn't necessarily a response, Erica, to the comment about the speed that it came back. This was just, hey, let's discuss this. So there was, once you bring it here, then we could say, okay, we want to talk with the Chamber. We're having ideas come together. Actually, when it was first agendized, we've had different discussions about the visitor center. And then we did have a conversation about a kiosk for verges fishing, right? And so it was like, we've had, we've seen the visitor center go from the Embarcadero, Morbay Boulevard, and then up to the, it's a current location now at the Chamber's location. And we do have, we verified that, you know, it may not be the best location. So it was just a thought, what's the potential with a trolley being converted to a kiosk in essence for a visitor center? And that could be located anywhere. So here we are discussing that. And it was great to say, oh, well, now we've got the aquarium, that maybe that's a location. But then, once again, as Marla was saying, it's still a temporary location and is it going to move again, which is kind of why maybe the kiosk trolley was, even though it's mobile, maybe it's more solid and foundational, because it is mobile. It can move around. But it did bring other conversations. If the trolley's not something that we want to pursue or we want to pursue other conversations, we're having them right now. The other thing that came to mind was the Distazio's building, Marla, when you bring that up, because there's the old wine bar that's at the end. That probably is more feasible than the aquarium, if you ask me. From the standpoint of making it, the bathroom's probably better. It's probably got more visibility, all that. So, you know, I could see where, you know, if we want to start having the discussion about relocating the visitor center, maybe that's what comes of this. I don't know. But it was more of a, hey, before we get rid of this trolley, is it viable for this type of use? So I, like I say, I didn't envision this being an action item, or we're making an action on this tonight, but it would spark conversation, and do we want to have further discussion on it? That may be where we're at. And do we have the capacity to add one more item for discussion? Sometimes these are more of a goal-setting items that we set and prioritize. But it has sparked some interest. It wasn't by any means meant to not include the Chamber, but actually start the conversation and say, hey, where do we want to go from here? So I guess I wanted to lead in with those comments as we started getting into this conversation. So I'll turn it back to Red, and you can get into your deliberation on maybe your thoughts on where we want to go, and we can conclude on how far we want to go with this.
I feel kind of, I guess, overwhelmed by possibilities.
Yeah.
And this is why I love to have staff. And just off the wall, one other thing I would like to consider, and maybe this will go into goal-setting in January, but I'm looking for a place for a history museum, too. So.
Trolley?
Yeah. So, yeah, I just don't have any direction to give tonight. Yeah, just more stuff to think about. I'm not, I'm leaning away from the trolley just because it has a lot of moving parts, you know, that need to be maintained and that, so.
I would agree with Red. I'm not interested in the trolley, just because the moving parts, metaphorically as well, that would come into play for that. But I'm not necessarily ready to throw everything in to go after the aquarium site, the Distazio's property. So perhaps I would be more willing to say, leave it up to staff, perhaps to investigate other possible sites for visitor center.
John?
I think it's a case of the trolley before the horse. No, I appreciate how this got here, and I think how it got here was a very telling a couple of years of statistics declining, not because of poor staff or poor services, but I think poor location. And I do get how it got here. And maybe the recommendation was a little bit too specific as opposed to considering a process of involvement for a major stakeholder, which is the Chamber Board and the Chamber itself, who has intimate knowledge about visitors. And I think I'd want their involvement. I'd want TBID's involvement. The Tourism Bureau is extremely important in this and has a lot to say about it. I think the Downtown Association and/or other business owners could possibly be involved in this. And so I'd be more interested in a goal-setting opportunity where we could define a process for evaluating this. I don't think the trolley is the answer. I don't want to make any decisions personally about any other sites right now, because there's inadequate information. So I'm leaning more towards process right now and just trying to suggest that we pull together through staff a stakeholder group that could look at these issues, vet them through the appropriate entities, stakeholders, so to speak, that are involved, and that this could come back, not in a year, but fairly quickly, because I do think we're missing out on an opportunity to serve more people that could greatly benefit tourism. And so the sooner the better. But I think a process coming back, defining stakeholders' involvement and coming to some conclusions and maybe making recommendations with more intimate knowledge would be helpful.
Point of order, it's 11:01 PM.
Right. Yes, I was noticing that, and I was just going to very quickly say, I'm just going to agree so we can pass this.
Okay, so we do have one more item on there, so I would take a motion to proceed past 11 o'clock.
I move.
I'll second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
We have two to three, so we're not going to go past 11 o'clock. Okay, so we have no, so we'll conclude, we'll conclude this, this will be un-concluded right now as well as.
I mean, if we wanted to, we can't do future agenda items now. That's just putting that out there.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Maybe reconsider the vote. I don't know what we do now.
Right. Yes. You want to reconsider your vote, John?
If a motion could be rescinded and ended, the meeting might be terminated with a time certain, that would be helpful.
I will rescind the motion to adjourn.
We can just make another motion, can't we?
Can't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would just make another motion.
All right. I move we go past 11 o'clock to a time certain of 11:10.
Okay. A second? Is there a second?
Oh, yes. Aye. Sorry. I second it.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. I'll make a motion, and we go past 11 o'clock to 11:30.
Would you instill a restroom break for two minutes?
Sure.
Thank you.
So I have a motion to go to 11:30. I need a second. So we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, then we can, then we'll just go in the, this is it then. We'll go ahead and adjourn. Okay, all right. Okay. That's funny. Okay, so our next regular council meeting will be at Tuesday, December 11th, with the exception of another council meeting that we'll be announcing. We have another special meeting in November.
I know you're adjourning. I thought you wanted to give direction regarding the ballots, the protest ballots.
We just adjourned the meeting because it's past 11 o'clock. I, Joe, I guess I just needed.
I thought we could do it in 10 minutes.
Oh, okay.